Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:08.
Recording in progress.
Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call when you're ready, Michael.
You alright?
Yeah, this chair.
Thank you Barry Lance. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present except, sorry, council members are present, except for Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you. Report out on closed session, there's nothing to report.
No report will actually.
Thank you, sir. Conflict of interest declarations? I don't know of any. Any pop up, we will report. Agenda review, any changes or deletions, David?
Mayor, we received notice from our student liaison, Guadalupe Nunez, that she was unable to attend tonight. We, on the agenda, we do have a proclamation or certificate of appreciation for our student liaison, with the council's approval and support, I'd like to move that to the next agenda, and she's indicated she can attend at that time.
Table that.
Good.
Okay, next, a little something out of order. I would like to have a moment of silence for the students and everyone involved in Texas. I think we're up to nineteen elementary students and two adults that have now passed from an active shooter. I'm gonna ask if everyone wants to say something, that's fine, but I'm gonna ask if we don't make it political in any way, that we just say, you know, we're here, we understand, we support you, and hug your loved ones closer than, a little tighter tonight. Those of us that have been involved in things like this, it does hit home, and it's a horrible situation. And I used to teach this stuff, and even just seeing kids dressed up is bad, so I could only imagine what these families are going through. So if you guys don't mind, a moment of silence. Thank you. Anyone want to say anything, please?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think with your permission, the flag at City Hall can be lowered to half staff, if the mayor so directs. Is that correct?
Staff can indeed lower the flag to half mass. If you'd like us to do that, we'll provide direction to do that.
I would absolutely support that. Do you have anything? Let's see, is Councilmember Bagby on yet? If not, we'll go to Councilmember Cruz, I know she was on.
Councilmember Bagby is now requesting that Councilmember Cruz turn on camera.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything to add to this? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Okay, B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time of the item up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per city council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. We'll start with those in the audience. Do we have anyone, please step up to the podium for me? Yes, sir. We're gonna ask you to step up and state your name for us. It's turned off, it's turned off, Michael, I can see the red dot.
Hello, am I good?
Yep.
Hello, everyone, my name's Tony Martinez. I wanted to get the status on possible upgrades to the City Park, Ferber Park, mainly hoping for basketball hoops being installed at Ferber Park. Really just getting rid of the sandpit, that's kind of chaos over there for animals and kids and everything, so that was just why I came tonight, so that's pretty much it.
David, do you actually speak to that, if you don't mind just giving a quick update on that?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to provide an update on planned park projects. So, just for reference to the speaker, I encourage him to receive the agenda for the Public Works Subcommittee, because all the items that he asked about were, or spoke about this week at the meeting, so you can actually watch the video, it's loaded on our website. But a quick update, we are currently working on bids and specs for development of two basketball courts at Cloverdale City Park, or Second Street City Park. That is in process. The Public Works Subcommittee did talk about the cost estimates, the construction cost estimates, and provided direction to staff to move forward with the project at the Public Works Subcommittee yesterday. With regards to Ferber Park, staff is well underway in the effort to replace the existing sandpit with a pickleball court. So, the construction contract has been let with a local contractor to replace, to excavate the sandpit and place an asphalt court, and we'll be working on contracts for additional improvements to support, support pickleball at Ferber, at Ferber Park. So, both those projects are moving forward. The pickleball court will probably be completed prior to the basketball courts, but they're both, they're both well underway and in process.
Sorry, does that mean that there's no hoops being installed where the sandpit's gonna be in? Because you're just saying pickleball, that means you're excluding one sport for another, or multipurpose court? You said pickleball's only at Ferber Park, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so on the south end of town, kids can't play basketball at a park because, you know, there's not really a lot of access for them to drive if they don't have cars or licenses or anything like that, so I was just curious if it's possible to get...
So, here's what I would recommend, Tony, is we can't have discussions over this during public comment.
Okay.
What I would suggest is, I'll get you the Public Works Subcommittee meeting, have you come speak at that meeting. That's, that's an open one, that you have the ability to
talk. I hear ya.
For Brown Act violations, we can't discuss items that aren't on our agenda.
Okay, I understand, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just, I wanna explain it so that you don't think that we're being rude.
No, no, yeah, I get that, yeah, then you're breaking down, I was just like...
I'll get you the day of the next meeting, and get you people to talk to through David and Kevin, and I'm good to set up for that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Tony, if you want to leave your contact information with our city clerk, we'll, I'll follow up with you directly.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh...
Please, no, I'm sorry, unless, do you need to? If you have a...
Yeah, I'd love to speak to you.
Yes, please, yeah. I thought you meant speak from your seat, I apologize. Please come up.
Tuesday, I got a bad gash in my hand, and I was told to go to Alexander Healthcare, and I went there, and they didn't want to help me at all. They had me take the Band-Aid off in reception, they looked at it, and then they said, "Oh, you know, we can't help you because you're not a established patient, so you have to go to urgent care in Windsor." They didn't even want to give me a Band-Aid, you know, they wanted me just to drive myself with an open gash. I'm a senior, I'm turning sixty-eight years old tomorrow, I had no one to drive me. I think we really need urgent care here in Cloverdale for anyone, so that everyone, I have insurance, they didn't even ask me about that, so that everyone can get seen if there's an emergency. Telling a senior or anyone else, you know, somebody may be a single mother without a car with a child that's hurt, to go to Windsor is ridiculous, and personally, I don't like that clinic, I think we should stop funding it, we need to start funding out urgent care and make something available, because this isn't Alaska. I mean, you know, we're far away enough where some people can't drive, but we need to have something available here for everybody, where everybody's treated with respect. I worked for five cardiologists, and the way I was treated on Tuesday, nobody should be treated like that. It's a bad situation.
Are you the person that sent me the email?
Yeah.
Okay, I was going to respond to you tomorrow.
Okay.
I appreciate you, I will pass the information on.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may just make a quick comment, I also received that email, and I did forward it to the CEO of Alexander Valley Health. I just want to make sure you understand the city does not fund them, that they are a separate entity, and they have their own direct board of directors, and you may want to get on their agenda to talk to them as well.
I heard that recently you guys voted to give them some money, somebody from the city council actually told me that, so...
Like I say, they're not, not part of the city, so...
But we actually need to fund something and have something for everybody, is my point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I was not allowed to call Mr. Arlen to do this, but I did receive the email from this constituent, and I have to confirm that I had the same experience at some point last fall.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir, please.
Hello, I am Osaguet Orghamian, been in Cloverdale for about, going on six years now. I got probably two discussions to raise. One, in regards to that park, I just, you just told me about, you can't comment about the pickleball, pickle court, whatchamacallit. I suggest we've, I mean, it's already going underway, we've, we probably find another place to put it, because, I mean, there's only a group that plays pickleball, and it's the geriatric population. Children are not playing pickleball. You're taking a great space that could be used for a multipurpose court, and pickleball is not one of it, just being honest. But, I guess, the, I'll talk at the other meeting, there's plenty of areas where seniors can go play, because most of them can drive, there's activities, other areas in town. And the second, my second issue is, I understand this may be a school board issue, but what are we as a city council, as a community, doing about what's going on in our middle school? It's an absolute disaster. And I don't even have a child going to middle school, I have a child starting kindergarten shortly. I, I'm trying to read on our community pages, and people are arguing on Facebook and all that. I don't care about that, but I want to make sure that you all are doing, are trying your best, not just passing a buck. I will be going to the school board meeting and just letting them know that they are being put on notice right now. I don't care about your political affiliations, but it is an absolute disaster at that middle school. And this is what I'm hearing second hand, I can't even imagine what it's like being in, as a teacher, as a parent, seeing their kids there, the fights, the drugs, and all that nonsense. So, I'm just letting you know, as a concerned Cloverdalian now, I've adopted this town as my town, it's a great town, great place to raise a family, but I don't want it to turn to like shit. I don't want it to turn like some other cities in Calif, we have a potential to keep it going. Okay? So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Anyone else in this audience? Jade?
And Cecilia.
And Cecilia. She'll probably talk more than you will.
Yes, Jade and Cecilia, always. Good, oh, good evening, my name's Jade Waymoth, and I'm the executive director at La Familia Sana. I understand on the agenda this evening is a conversation around SROs, having them at the school, and I want to encourage...
Jade, I'm gonna have to ask you, just because it is part of that discussion...
Okay.
Could I have you wait for that item?
Yeah, a public comment during that time?
Yes, ma'am. Can you handle that?
Depending on the time, only because I have a child with me, can I say something now?
Or we can maybe move that item up if...
Don't move it up just for me, but...
It would be.
Okay.
If the council's okay with it, I'll be okay with it. Okay, please Jade, go ahead, yes.
Great, sounds good, thank you.
No, I mean, no, no, yeah, go ahead.
Got it. I want to encourage some community input around that conversation, bilingual, bicultural opportunity for folks to understand the intended goal and objective of what having an SRO is on, is the impact of having that on campus and the intended goal. I think that would create a little bit more opportunity for transparency, for everybody in the community to get an idea of what the goal is and the objective, as well as really buy into the idea. So I really want to encourage the opportunity for that to be created for the rest of the community, more transparent conversations around it. And that's it.
Thank you Jade.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any public comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask, maybe the chief to weigh in, just real, one minute or less, just an overview on some of those allegations that are floating around the city regarding the school. I know the police department has been engaged, so I think it's appropriate, based on what you've heard and what's going on, just take a minute and just give a quick overview.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Of course, there's been a lot of things going around about what's taking place at the school, a lot of incidents and a lot of things. You know, we did a thorough investigation, and we assigned an officer to this, and we made sure that we looked into a lot of these allegations, and they include things where the school, students were able to access narcotics through the back fence and things like this. We did a thorough investigation and researched all of the allegations that were made, and I think one of the things that came out of this is, we always have to be careful about what's being put out on social media and what's being put out to communities that doesn't contain all the facts. And I think this happened in a lot of circumstances, and what we found when we were looking in this investigation is, a lot of the things were not factual. Yes, we found some documented incidents, but they're not ridiculously over the top, they're not anything that any other school system is not facing. They were very common in what they found. So, I just want to make it clear that some of the things you're hearing are inaccurate, and they're inaccurate based on our independent investigation of looking into it. We have officers that attend our school system, in the Washington Middle School, and I am confident, if it were such an unsafe environment, I don't believe their students would attend there. So I just want to try to put the community at ease, that we are here to assist, and as what was said earlier, we will be discussing these matters, but I'm always available to anybody who wants to reach out to me and have discussions, I'd be happy to do that. But, that's what I'd like to say now, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? I see no, I see one hand in the attendees list, Michael.
Angela, did I just hear you say that the school was not unsafe? I wasn't sure if I heard that correctly.
It wasn't any different than any other school at this point with their investigation, and there wasn't anything drastic.
Okay, you should probably speak to some of the staff that have actually witnessed the drug sales through the fence. If they've come forward to me, then I'm pretty sure they wouldn't have a problem giving the statement to the police, and the school is unsafe if my daughter's coming home with videos on her phone, sent to her of fights daily. That school is out of control.
Thank you. Angela, can you, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, not to belabor this, but I would like to encourage Angela and any other resident in the community to submit names and information to the police department, guarantee they will follow up on those leads. So please, just submit it directly to the police department, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll move on to C, which is the proclamation, which we tabled, so we'll move into D, consent calendar.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to note that while it's later on in the agenda under communications, that we did receive a communication from Mr. Richard St. Angelo in regards to item on the consent calendar, most specifically, it is item D6. This is with regard to the roadway improvement project list funded by SB1. Mr. St. Angelo has requested the addition of Lake Street, Live Oak Drive, on that, on the SB1 list. If you're, if you're so inclined, you can obviously pull that item to discuss in more detail, but if council supports, we can, we can add, we can add the, those street segments to the list. And Live Oak Drive.
Okay.
Otherwise, that would be something that could be referred to the Public Works Subcommittee for further review and consideration. So I just wanted to bring that up, given the, we received communication this afternoon from, from Mr. St. Angelo regarding that consent item.
So David, with that, I'll pull D6, just so that we can discuss it, just in case. Does anyone else have anything else they want to pull? Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, I would like to pull D4.
Thank you. Anyone else? We would have a motion for the rest? Be one, two, three, five, and seven.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent calendar excluding D4 and D6.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, I'm gonna get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walter?
Aye.
Chair, Mayor Lance?
Aye. Okay, Councilmember Cruz, D4.
Yes, I would like to have more of a public explanation about the changes in the salary adjustment and the title of the job of Public Works Director/City Engineer, what changes are there, and also, I would like explanation on adjustment to Assistant City Manager/Community Development Salary Classification.
David, would you please?
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to address the request by Councilmember Cruz for additional description. Just for reference, for the community, the item that's on consent, it's under D4, is a proposed salary adjustment for two positions. The two positions that are addressed in the agenda item include the Assistant City Manager/Community Development Director classification, and the second adjustment is proposed for the Public Works Director/City Engineer. I'll, I'll take up the Public Works Director/City Engineer first. Well, by way of background, the city, under my direction, commissioned Regional Government Services, RGS, to perform a compensation or salary analysis for those positions, for both of those positions. Included in the agenda is an overview of the recommendations that were provided independently by, by RGS. The, those positions were reviewed for two purposes. One, the Public Works City Engineer position has been a position that's been under recruitment for well over six months now, and we have not received any qualified applicants based on the position qualifications, particularly the requirement that the position be filled by a professional engineer or PE. The evaluation that RGS conducted was, what is the appropriate salary, salary cost, schedule for a Public Works Director that does not include the city engineer requirement? So, what you see in the packet and what you see included with the agenda is a memo that RGS prepared that, that made a recommendation that there be an adjustment in the salary for that position, reducing the, by 2.5% to reflect the removal of the city engineer requirement, or professional engineer requirement. What that would enable us to do, if council so approves, is adjust the job description and republish the job so that we could, you know, attract a qualified applicant without the city engineer requirement. That does come with a commitment, however, I will note that we will likely need to continue to contract for city engineer services for certain functions that require that service. So that, that's one, that's one component. The, the other component is, in reference to our Assistant City Manager/Community Development Director, this would be the only remaining position that has not been reviewed and/or adjusted for the purposes of addressing market conditions. And so, I saw it fit to do, have RGS again do an independent analysis of, of that, that classification, and what they've recommended in the agenda is a, a 5% adjustment in the, the annual salary for that position, and what that would mean, of course, would be adjusting the, the compensation schedule for, for the position by 5% or a 5% increase on an annual basis. What, part of the reason we bring this for tonight is so that if council does support it, there, there will be two things that will be followed up and be required. One would be a, a change in the employment agreement with that position, but also concurrently, it would be necessary to include the costs in the budget. So, what we'd like to do, if council supports it, is to go ahead and make those changes within the budget that you're considering tonight. So that's why the timing of this is so that any changes or modifications to both of those salary allocations can be reflected in, in your budget document. But likewise, it ultimately would need to come back to you by way of an agreement, an employment agreement with, with the incumbent to modify the particular salary schedule. I think there's been some, some question as to, you know, why bring in this forward in this manner? We'll note that we have done this with other positions, we've done this with the finance and HR analysts, we've done this with a park superintendent position, so I don't think it's anything peculiar for us to, to bring this forward. And again, the timing was just such that we could reflect any changes in the cost allocation within, within the budget document.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Cruz, I'll let you go first, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do have a question. So, does that mean that there's only going to be one position, and that's going to be of Public Works Director?
Mayor, that's a great question by Councilmember Cruz. The, assuming council supports RGS's recommendation to adjust the salary schedule for the Public Works Director, we would remove the city engineer requirement from, from the job description so that we could re-advertise that position, which, you know, our hope would be it enable more applicants to actually meet the minimum qualifications to, to apply. So, in reality, that would mean that the position really is a Public Works Director, rather than a Public Works Director/City Engineer.
And then the final question to that is, are you still going to recruit for a city engineer, or are you putting that on hold for now?
I think the answer to that question is that we currently do have a contract for interim city engineer services. We do believe it would be necessary, again, as a kind of caveat, that if you make the change, that it would be necessary to continue to contract for, for those services. I think it's fair to say, given the workload within the Public Works Department, that even if we didn't necessarily make that change, there would still be a need for contract services for, for engineering-related work. So, I don't think it, the work goes away or is reduced, it's really about changing the position classification to open it up to more, more applicants.
Okay, so there are two questions here. I have my Public Works Director question answered. My question is, are you going to give up on the city engineer position, or are you going to continue to recruit for a city engineer, acknowledging that there's so much work that you still need to contract with, with YOS?
I think, you know, we went through, we kind of looked at history to how we were able to get a city engineer in the past. We did change the position classification to a Public Works Director, and maybe because it fell on someone's radar, we were able to actually attract a, a qualified position, qualified personnel that had that professional engineering designation, and it was just filled at the, at the lower cost salary allocation. You know, with that said, you know, and as noted in the memo by, prepared by RGS, they note that we did have some challenges with recruitment. From my experience in looking at other similar cities in Sonoma County and in the Bay Area, there's, it's very difficult to, it's a very difficult position to fill. Generally, engineering positions are being left vacant, there's not a lot of qualified applicants out there. If, if council wanted to keep the salary schedule as it currently is, but remove the professional engineering requirement, you know, that might... Engineering requirement, you know, that might put us in a better position to try to attract a qualified applicant for that role, but of course, that's within your--
Excuse me, David. Let's ask one question. Is the City Engineer position going to be closed for now? Yes or no?
Well, the answer would be that it would be reclassified as a Public Works Director.
But that is not necessarily an engineer, you just said.
That is correct, Councilmember Cruz. We would--
You will not have a City Engineer onboard. You will only have contracted services. That's my question.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
The second question that I had was that I feel that it's necessary, that even though all these decisions are discussed in the Admin/Polic Subcommittee, all this information needs to come out to all of the council, because we cannot attend the Subcommittee meetings unless we are fly on the wall. And I think it's essential that all of us are informed of presentations and discussions that are done in the Administration/Polic Subcommittee, as well as all the other subcommittees. That is my comment and my concern. Thank you. And I think it's good for transparency, not only among council, but also for the public. Thank you.
Any more comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, first of all, the city has historically contracted for City Engineer services up until our last City Engineer was the first and last in-house City Engineer we had. And even due to the workload, I have to admit, a lot of the engineering portion of that Director of Public Works City Engineer was contracted out to an outside engineering firm. It's just not enough time. So, I think this is a smart move, based on the market. And just to answer your question, Councilmember Cruz, I don't believe this did go to the Administration/Polic/Finance Subcommittee for review or discussion. So, this particular item just came straight to the council base.
Then, it was an operational discussion?
Councilmember Cruz, please wait until the call is over. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Your final question to--
Please, Councilmember Cruz, please don't interrupt us. Please wait your turn. We have to give everyone a turn, just like I do for you.
I was just going to say, it's in the packet, the staff report, and if you read the minutes of the different subcommittees, usually everything is outlined on there of what was discussed. So, I'm just pointing that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
I do read the package to make sure everybody understands that, but there are comments and there are concerns that need to be addressed, because not everybody's going to sit down and read the package. It's only the obligation of the council members. And yes, my question was, is this something that was an operational decision, or is it something that is discussed? Because I assume that when it comes to budget allocations and budget alterations, it is discussed prior to coming to council. I must be confused about something here.
Mayor, if I can, this item was discussed by the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee--
It was, it says right here.
In May.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the reason I said that, Mr. Mayor, is because on the staff report, it said nothing from the-- well, Subcommittee, it said none.
Gotcha.
So--
I had one question, and I think it was pretty much answered by Councilmember Paula, but David, what if we went out for the Public Works Director/City Engineer and we raised the price? What more is it going to cost us beyond this person? I know we had an Assistant Engineer. What was that cost? How much did we put into consulting firm? Would it raise this too high for us to do that? Or would it be cost-effective to have one body in-house versus two that we had before? Does that make sense? And you can tell me no, Todd, you're off-base. It took two people to do the job, plus some, and that will answer my question.
Well, I think it's really a kind of a policy question for council as to where you'd like to set your salaries for senior staff, and, you know, particularly relative to the market. And, you know, I don't want to delve too deeply in this in terms of how you look at salaries, both from an external and internal perspective, but you raise a great question, Mayor, is if council was to raise the salary to be more reflective of what the market conditions are, would that position us to be more successful to attract a qualified engineer to fulfill the position as it's currently written? I think my answer is, of course, I don't know for certain, but I do think, you know, anytime you adjust your salary in a positive direction, you're going to get a greater likelihood of applicants applying for that position.
It's a little bit more than that, David, if you don't mind. It's just a third time. If you added up maximum salary, and you took it over a 24-month period to cover two bodies, it's $312,000. That's almost the cost that we're going to be paying West Yost by itself. And then, we're going to add this on top of it. Can that work be done if you have the right person to cover that, to be cost-effective as our budget is in deficit?
I think there's--
Versus having West Yost, and the Public Works Director, and possibly an Assistant Engineer, or something along the line. Does that make sense?
It makes absolute sense, and I think it's kind of somewhere in the middle, in that, you know, given the significant workload, if we were to be able to fulfill these positions with personnel, I still think there would very likely still be a need to do some contracts, for contract services. What that level would be, I don't know without looking at it more carefully. I think clearly, we could reduce a pretty significant amount of the contracted services, but there, again, there would be some, you know, just based on workload, there would be a need for some contract services. It would require us just to assess a little further what that would look like.
Any idea what we had when we had this engineer and the Assistant Engineer on staff? Any idea what we paid for West Yost to help them? Obviously, I don't look very exact. Anything around about $100,000, $200,000?
Yeah, we didn't specifically have West Yost under contract, but we did have other engineering firms under contract. So, I would hate to give you a number without doing some additional analysis around that point and look at it more closely. And, you know, we're happy to do, you know, staff's happy if you'd like us to kind of look at this more closely and, you know, reflect a salary classification that, again, could attract a qualified applicant. Again, that's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a policy question for council as to where you want to set those salaries for key positions.
And my worry is just that we're going to, pricing ourselves high in the market might be cost-effective in the long run, and we spend a lot of money, and we're deficit spending by a large number right now. And so, $200,000 in the mix might save us. And I don't know the answers to these. That's why I'm bringing it up and listening. Please, Vice Mayor, you've been here--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd just like to say that when we contract with West Yost or any other engineering firm, you just don't get one engineer, you get the whole firm, kind of like Maya's Nave. You know, if there needs to be an expertise in land use, you know, they have the individual to put in the scene and work with Jose. And West Yost, I think, with Vanessa, you know, they were able to get us that $3 million grant, and it's because they filled out the grant form and they applied for it. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't have got it if we had an in-house individual, but they knew how to fill that form out, and they knew which buttons and boxes to check off. So, there's a lot of benefits to be contracting with an outside firm, especially when the cost is almost equivalent. So, that was all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, obviously, I think our preference and probably most cities' preferences would be to have an in-house sort of licensed engineer with an engineering stamp. And the fact is, is that we are falling off a demographic cliff. We are not producing enough municipal and county staff members who are qualified for the spots that are available. And so, you know, we're not the only city that is in this position. You know, before we hired our last City Engineer, we were contacting with Coastland. We also did ad hoc contracts with West Yost. They did the Western Hills flooding modeling for us, and it wasn't just one member of West Yost, it was the team. We also have a lot of experience with Vanessa, and of course, Andy through the Russian River Watershed Association. And as Vice Mayor said, the advantage is that we don't just get Vanessa's very capable expertise, we benefit from the entire team at West Yost. So, I think that we're in a position of a lot of cities our size, and cities that are a lot larger than we are and have much better ability to go out and compete for these professionals that are scarcer and scarcer. The other thing that we really should consider is that when you're looking at salary of an engineer plus, you know, an Assistant Engineer, is if they're in-house, that we're also paying their benefits, and we're taking on that pension liability. So, it's really important when we do our, you know, short-term and long-range planning to really look at, gee, are we actually better off in the long term signing what looks to be upfront, a very expensive contract, but which actually could save the city considerably over time. So, I'm very happy with the proposal that Coastland has brought to us. I think that we are very lucky in that we have these long-term relationships with both Coastland and, you know, the other item in the consent calendar, adjusting the agreement with West Yost. I think everyone's working really well together, so I would like to, I would be so bold, I'd like to move this item forward. And if we want to give additional instruction to staff to kind of, you know, pencil it out a little bit better in the future so that we could transition off of these contracts, I think that that's fine. But we have so much, we have such a need that even when we had in-house full-salary teams, we're still contracting out considerably. So, I think that that's an analysis that's worth taking up. So, with that, I would be happy to move the item.
Did you offer that resolution? I'll second that.
I'm going to open up the public comment before we-- Anyone have any public comments? And seeing no hands in the attendees list, bring it back and no roll call. You going to read the title? D4? I can read before you.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale establishing a new salary schedule. Is this right? Is this the right one? Great. For the position of Assistant City Manager/Community Development Director and amending the classification and salary for the Public Works Director/City Engineer. We'd gone so long, I'd forgot what we were talking about. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor Lance.
We have the second is Councilmember Paula.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero, we'll move on to D6, roadway improvement project for 2223, funded by SB1.
So-- Mayor, just a quick overview on this item. We previously brought this forward for council's consideration in early April. Subsequent to council's adoption of the resolution approving the list of projects for SB1, the State of California did issue a recommendation to include certain language in the resolution, and so, we saw it fit to bring this back for council's consideration to ensure that we had the state-recommended language in the resolution. So, that was the primary purpose as to why we were bringing this item back again. But since that time, we did have the interest of residents on Live Oak and Lake Street who would like to request the addition of the street segments to the SB1 list. I don't necessarily see any problem with the recommendation. It's certainly easy enough to add to the list and include that in our middle. I think the only concern is that the council has prioritized the Tarmann Track as kind of your next priority. That's a fairly significant effort, as identified in the resolution, that's, you know, our cost estimates are somewhere north of $4 million for road improvements. So, it very well could be, you know, given that we receive about $150,000 per year in SB1 revenue, we've had to save that revenue for a number of years to even afford undertaking the Fourth Street Reconstruction Project. So, it's very likely that, you know, it would mean a number of years before we get to Lake Street, but there are alternatives to that that we can look at through, you know, Measure M funding and also council priorities, if that's, you know, your direction. That would be separate from this. But again, we did receive a request from Mr. St. Angelo, so I wanted to bring that forward, given the items on your agenda tonight.
Since I folded, do you guys mind if I ask questions first? My question is, how did you select Clark Avenue from South to Blair? If you're talking about Tarmann Track, it is the newest section, and it's been done twice in my time that I can remember, when nowhere else in Tarmann Track has been done since the 80s. And places like Will's would drive their 6-inch to 12-inch culverts. You know, you'd about lose a bumper every time you drive over those roads, and Clark is, or that section of Clark is probably the nicest in Tarmann by far. So, I was wondering, how did the best one get selected to redo?
This, the Clark Avenue Rehabilitation Project was a project that had previously been recommended by council, and so, that was, it was basically a continuation. And again, you know, recognizing that we're still in the process of completing the Fourth Street project, so we could, to your point, Mayor, we could broaden the description to be more inclusive of additional street segments within the Tarmann Track. I think this came about because there was a number of residents who expressed that there was a real need to try to preserve that pavement before it becomes more deteriorated. And so, you know, again, the other street sections probably are much more significant from a cost perspective to repair, and in, you know, given the limited amount of SB1 funding, sometimes you make a choice between a complete redo, or can you save something before it gets to a point so deteriorated? So, I think that was kind of the logic that went into it. You know, no deference to the street segments that were, you know, in misrepair already. It's just sometimes you try to preserve segments before they get there.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council?
No, it's, my only comment would be, you know, we have such limited funding to do so many big projects, and so, you really have to piece it together one by one. And unfortunately, saving some streets before they totally have to be replaced is probably money well spent, because it costs so much to replace a street. So, I feel that's good logic, at least to start, and with the ultimate goal of finding new money, hopefully through grants, infrastructure grants, improvements, that we can do the whole streets. So, that'd be my thoughts. You know, I just wanted to say that Lake Street and Live Oak and, what's the other one? Evercrest? I think if I'm meaning that right. Yeah, they've been cut off with the construction of 101, and, you know, it's kind of like, way over there, we tend to forget them a lot, and there's no doubt that we need the Tarmann section done, and you're absolutely right. I can remember our City Manager and our former, I'm sorry, our former City Manager and our former City Engineer, you know, letting us know that it's cheaper to keep the streets maintained that are already in good shape, rather than trying to repair the ones that are in total disrepair. So, I'd like to see us add those three probably to the entire list as well. There's no end to that. You can add just about every street in Cloverdale to the list, so that's my two cents.
I'm a little hesitant to just add them kind of on an ad hoc basis, and not having had an engineer--
had an engineer. This is where, you know, not having a city engineer on the dais is, this is the, kind of the price that we pay. But I'm just, without the advice of real hard analysis of taking a look at where we get the most benefit of our very limited road dollars, I'm just, I grew up on a tiny one-lane road in the hills like this, and that's what I learned to drive on. And so I'm, I certainly understand, you know, where this request is coming from, but at the same time, I have to kind of look at our very limited funds and where we can get the most benefit from them. And I know that the Clark Street area is a high priority. So, I mean, without the analysis of engineering staff, I would be reticent to make any additions that are just out of the blue right now. And I, but I certainly would want to see them considered on the Public Works Subcommittee meeting if that's the way that the council wants to.
Councilmember Cruz?
We have to trust the technical advice and professional advice of engineers and respect prior council recommendations. Many of us have very many concerns about many roads and streets in the city. But then again, we have to be respectful of prior decisions and prior recommendations as well as professional advice.
Thank you.
I believe, David, and I don't know how much I could say, but I know that Vanessa was helping us look into some issues on Lake Street due to some constructions that have been done. Maybe we could follow up with that? And maybe that might help Mr. St. Angelo with some of his concerns. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'd like to suggest that this go to be put on the Public Works Subcommittee, and we should take a look at the bigger picture as well and working with our city engineer to see, you know, look at where that should fit within the scheme of all the streets. But I don't think it should interfere with this particular resolution, so.
Do you guys mind if I open up the public comment?
Not at all.
Please, sir, come up.
Yes, I'm from St. Angelo. I live at 218 Live Oak Drive. And I asked the city manager to look into this last November. He said he probably would as soon as he could get an engineer to accompany him. I assume he hasn't been able to yet. I've been living there for almost 50 years, and the roadway when I first moved there was adequate. Since then, the city has patched it once or twice, just small patches, and has deteriorated greatly to the point now where it's about two-thirds deteriorated asphalt and about one-third dirt. And the deterioration in the asphalt's not uniform. There are potholes, and there are parts that are broken off and stuff like that. Now, before, when I only drove a big van and a truck, it didn't bother me that much. I just went over it. But I have a small car, and my roommate has a small car, and my other tenants have small cars too. And they are really difficult to navigate that treacherous stretch of Live Oak Drive. But the overall consideration is, this is city limits. I'm a property owner in the city limits. I've been a property owner since 1977 at the same spot, and I have seen no significant repair or support for my city street. I feel like I'm kind of disenfranchised. And I would like to have this be included in SB one so that we can address it in turn in expeditious time as possible. And I appreciate the city manager's inclusion and briefing to you today of that. Now, I'm wondering, Mrs. Bagby's one-lane road that she lived on, was that city limits? Or was that rural?
It was rural, county.
Okay, there we go. It's rural. That's entirely different. The county often has a policy of letting deteriorated roads go all the way back to gravel because that's, it's county, not city. But this is city limits. And that's where I think the main distinction is, ma'am. Thanks for your consideration. Thanks for your courtesy, too.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing none in the audience and seeing no hands, we'll bring it back to you guys.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a clarifying question. Referring this back to the Public Works Subcommittee doesn't exclude it from being added to the list. What it does is gives us an opportunity to discuss it in more detail and have our engineer weigh in on the condition. Is that right? Yeah?
There is a requirement that we submit the current list to the state, but again, I think we've heard council's priority is to address Clark kind of first. And so, it certainly doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to do this every year, that we can't, you know, do some additional analysis and study and bring it back to add to the, you know, a future SB one list, along with other possible solutions that we can address, including working with the city engineer to see if there's some patching work that can be made.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the item forward by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2022, 2023 funded by SB one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? Mayor Lance?
Aye.
E, Communications.
Mayor, I just want to point out that there was a present, or a letter from Ms. Rhonda Knowles, I believe that you were in receipt of it, in regards to item G two.
Item G two, and I figured we'd just bring it up with that one.
Okay.
If that's okay. Thank you. No public hearings, we'll move into G, new business. G one, consideration of resolution to place a measure on November 8, 2022 ballot to ban the sale and use of all fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks within the city.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just, quick background, then I'll turn this over to our city attorney's office. On January this year, the council did review options regarding the sale position, use of fireworks and public displays. And at that council meeting, did provide directions to staff to prepare a ballot measure for possible placement on the November 8 consolidated election. And so, what's included in your packet is a resolution that would provide for placing a measure on the ballot. Our city attorney's office, Alex Mog, is here tonight. He is going to give council a presentation overview on this item. So I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thanks, David. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Like David said, I know this is a familiar issue to all of you, so. But, you know, under state law, there are generally two types of fireworks, you know, dangerous fireworks, which require, you know, you need to be a licensed professional to use under close regulation from the state fire marshal. Those are currently prohibited in the city unless you are one of those individuals. And then there is safe and sane fireworks, which are, you know, smaller fireworks, they're not really, they're not the type of fireworks we think of that, you know, shoot up into the sky, you know, for personal use. And under state law, cities and counties can decide whether or not to allow safe and sane fireworks currently as part of Cloverdale's local amendments to its fire code. It allows safe and sane fireworks. They're generally sold, you know, they're manufactured by, you know, large companies and then sold to the retail through, generally through nonprofits as a way to fundraise for those nonprofits and generate some money. And this occurs, you know, near the July 4 holiday. And currently, the municipal code, the sections that allow safe and sane fireworks have a number of regulations included there as to, you know, when they can be used, how they can be sold, and all of that. So based on the direction from council previously, the resolution before you would place a measure on the ballot on the November 8 election to prohibit safe and sane fireworks. It, you know, the measure restates, you know, that it's prohibiting all fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks. As an aside, you know, since after the agenda was posted, we received some feedback that that language might be a little confusing and suggests that, you know, those large fireworks are, you know, are legal right now and only by voting for this ballot measure would that be, would those large fireworks become illegal? So if it's, the council's direction, you know, the measure could be changed to simply say prohibit safe and sane fireworks. So it's very clear that those, that's the change in the status quo that the measure would bring about. So the measure would prohibit the sale of safe and sane fireworks if passed by the, excuse me, the measure would place an ordinance on the ballot for the community to consider, voters to consider. And if it's passed by the voters, would prohibit the sale of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Cloverdale. It would still allow for the large, you know, professional scale fireworks with, you know, done by a licensed professional with a permit issued by the city council. So the city council could determine, you know, is the appropriate, is the location for the fireworks display appropriate? Unlike certain things like a tax measure that requires, a tax measure requires voter approval, prohibiting safe and sane fireworks is something that the council, if it chose to do, could simply do on its own, you know, initiative without submitting the measure to the voters. But, you know, submitting it to the voters obviously gives the public the chance to weigh in on this issue. So as a ballot measure, it requires just a simple majority for the city council to adopt this resolution to place the measure on the ballot. And then at the election, it would require a simple majority of 50% plus one to be adopted by the voters. Because if it is adopted by the voters, that means only, it could only really be changed by the voters in the future. So the city council could, you know, make certain amendments, impose additional penalties. But if the city, if the voters approve a prohibition on safe and sane fireworks, only the voters would be able to remove that prohibition in the future if that was the desire of the community. The, there is a cost associated with putting a measure on the ballot because, you know, it requires printing, it requires the, you know, the county to administer a little bit more counting of ballots. And so the county has provided us with an estimate of what that cost would be. And, you know, it depends on the exact number of registered voters, but the upper end of the estimate is around $15,000 to place it on the ballot. One five, excuse me. So, and in the resolution, the draft resolution, as part of any ballot measure, there are arguments that can be submitted in favor of it and against it, along with rebuttals to those arguments. And those are printed in the ballot, you know, guide, and that's part of the cost of, as well, of the ballot measure, along with an impartial analysis from the city attorney that, you know, in an impartial way describes what the measure does. Under state law, there are some default timelines for when those need to be submitted. So the default requirement for when a argument's for and against need to be submitted is 14 days after the city council votes to place the measure on the ballot. So that's where you see, if you look at the resolution, it says currently that those arguments for and against are due June 8. However, that's just the default. The city council could set that date farther out into the future. You know, we can't set it too far out. We need to have all of our materials to the county by August 12. But, you know, could certainly extend that period by a few weeks if that was the will of the council. And again, you know, we have, although this is coming to you tonight, and certainly it's agendized for the council to act tonight if that's the council's will, but there is some time. If the council had, you know, significant feedback on the draft, you know, that's something that could come back to the council at a future date, and there would still be time for the council to act, you know. Small changes, change the date, a change to, you know, eliminate a word or two here, that's something that we could do in this meeting tonight. But if the council had more significant changes, there is the opportunity to do that as well. So that was just a quick overview of everything. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council would have.
Councilmember Cruz, would you like to go first?
Comments? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex, I just have a question here. You had mentioned that the, that the public fireworks displays would have to be approved by the city of Cloverdale. And I'm just going to ask for some clarification from the city. I don't think we do that now. I think that's approved by the fire district, if I'm not mistaken. Or if we were supposed to do it, I don't think we've ever been doing it. Could we get some clarification on that?
So, and one, I clarify, they would still need to get any necessary fire permits? This would just be, you know, sort of equivalent to a use permit to have a large event fireworks display. Certainly, if the council didn't think that was necessary, that's something that could be removed from the proposed ordinance?
Yeah. Well, you know, my only concern, and, you know, maybe I shouldn't be looking at it this way, but it's the liability of the city, you know? And if we give the blessing to a pyrotechnic show like they've been doing for the last umpteen years, you know, fire erupts, you know, we gave them the permit. And I believe in the past that the fire district would have to sign off on that because they're the experts on the condition of what things look like. So I would just like to get some clarification on that.
But Vice Mayor, to your question about permitting fireworks displays, that is something that is provided for in your municipal code, and I know our city attorney is going to take a look at that, that has generally been something that the, is provided for in the fire code that lends responsibility to the fire chief. And so, in our case, we have an independent district, so the responsibility of permitting fire events has largely been managed and maintained by the fire district. And that particularly pertains to the sale of safe and sane as well, permitting their individual stations where those are sold. Though there is, there is set forth in the code, a process for applying for permits for the sale of safe and sane. And again, that has largely been deferred historically to the fire district.
Well, I just don't want to see any language in here that would maybe misdirect people to come to the city when they have a concern about the shows, whether we should be having it or not. It would be nice if we could refer that over to the fire district. So, that's where I'm coming from on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think as the city manager explained, when the code, it's a very old code, very old code, and we used to have, the city used to have a fire department with a fire chief that worked for the city. And I think it was inappropriate to have the fire chief actually weigh in and make that call. Currently, the city really has no input whether there should be security, whether there should be any safeguards put in place. It's really relied on an outside agency right now, the district. And I'm not really sure I'm comfortable with that. I think the city should be made aware and maybe have at least an opportunity to review what they're trying to do and how it's going to work and how it all fits. So I hear what you say, Vice Mayor Walter, about liability, but I'm not sure that releases the city of liability if we do nothing. I think the intent is not to have a fire and to make sure it's safe and properly staffed. So I think having that review ability is important. So I really support at least having, maybe not making the final decision, but at least having input and being able to put in any conditions that the city feels is appropriate at that time.
And I, Joe, I hear you completely. No matter what, the city's getting sued, you know? No matter what, the city's getting sued, you know?
Yeah. Alex, thanks for the very clear report. And I think it's kind of important for us to remember as a council and members of the public, what we're here is to consider the resolution as to whether or not to place it on the ballot. Yeah, this issue has been the subject of a lot of public input over the years. And when it was, you know, brought to council, you know, before the pandemic, it's important to remember that it's not, that there are two sides to this issue. There were several sides to this issue. You know, when the, the public came to us and it was placed on the police, finance, and public works subcommittee meeting, there were people from the public who came and just said, you know, "I'm really worried about safe and sane fireworks. I know my neighbors use them and, you know, we're, we're in a drought and I, and it's very disturbing to animals and I'd like to ban that, but I'd like to see the, the displays stay." And then there were, you know, other folks who said, "Well, I don't have a problem with safe and sane, but I, that, that display is, frightens me." So there were, you know, there were, and then of course there were folks who supported, you know, keeping both forms of fireworks. And so I think that we've gotten a lot of, a lot of input from the public. We, we know that it's a difficult issue. But people have definitely wanted, you know, not just two things, but three things. And I think that that's kind of my issue with the resolution as it is right now. I mean, and, and, and Alex, you did exactly what we directed you to do. So that's not, you know, I don't have an issue with you and, and Jose, but because you were, you were advised to bring the, the resolution to consider putting it on the fall ballot. And I guess looking at it, reading it even with the, the updates that you gave us, it doesn't have the nuance that, that the public really did voice their concerns about. I mean, the, I think that the, the fact is, the difficulty is, is that when the city split from the district, we never took back the police powers governing fireworks. And we didn't actively engage in it. And, and so a lot of the heat, sorry, a lot of the heat that we take from citizens who are not happy about it, they, I think that they do rightfully put on this council because this is what we were elected to do. We were elected to make these difficult decisions. So, you know, when I see this, I'm not really happy with it, with it as it is because I think that we were elected to make these difficult calls, to do the research, get the expert opinion, find out, well, geez, what did we do in the past? What, what should we have done? What do we need to do to correct it? And take action on it. So I'm not happy about putting this item on a ballot and spending $15,000 to do what this council gets elected to do. So that's where, and the issue tonight is whether or not to replace the measure on the ballot in November, spend $15,000 to do what we as five adults should be able to sanely discuss amongst ourselves and make a rational decision about. So that's where I am on the item as it is. But I have to say, say thank you to staff for, you know, doing an excellent report and doing what you were directed to do. But I think I, if I remember, remember correctly, I think I voted against putting on the ballot. And I have to say, that's probably where I am tonight unless I, you know, I'm persuaded by my fellow council members or members of the public at this point.
The first thing, I think that we, we as a council voted to put this on the ballot, and I, I'm right there with you. I didn't support, I think I voted for it because the council supported it. However, everyone has known since I was the person standing down there talking to Melanie for public comment, when she was the mayor, sorry, Councilmember Bagby, I apologize for that. I was very much for keeping fireworks. Everyone knows that. Everyone knows the facts like we talk about. However, that's not what's at, at play tonight. Tonight is we as a board or as a council voted to bring the ballot here as a ballot measure, and this is the wording, and that's kind of what we're deciding. And so that's where I'm going to talk on. I'm not going to go into the whole fireworks portion of this. The language that Alex talked about is a lot of what I said to him earlier when we spoke. I don't, I think it is very confusing when they talk about all fireworks, including safe and sane, because it's lumping everything together. So I think it's, it makes some people, or would make some people think, if I don't ban all fireworks, then they can let off bottle rockets too and have all the illegals there. The state of California says safe and sane fireworks are legal. They're legal under the state. So with that, it should say the state approved safe and sane fireworks. Or safe and sane fireworks that are approved by the state of California are now going to be illegal in Cloverdale. It needs to be something that's very specific to those because everything else is already illegal. We don't need to, to beat the dead horse or reiterate it. And so if we ever brought this back as a ballot, then we'd be making all fireworks legal if we had to vote on it again. And so I, I think it's just, it's confusing. And it, we might be able to figure it out, like maybe 3,000 other people in our town can. So I think it needs to be very specific as to the California state approved safe and sane fireworks would be what we're banning.
So, Mr. Mayor, this council does not have the authority to override state law. So what's illegal by state law, we could not bring back. And so the only thing we can prohibit here are things that are legal under California law that comes under the jurisdiction of our authority to ban in the city. So I think you're concerned, though it's a valid one, really, we couldn't do that. So I, I see as a mute issue as far as we couldn't come back and say everything's legal.
But it's confusing here saying.
I thought it was very clear.
Including. Because it's, you're, you're, you're reiterating what the state has already told us on, on half of the, the ordinance.
Well, I think when we, going back, when we gave direction to the city attorney, we made it clear, safe and sane is a brand as well as a legal prohibited or permitted, I guess, through the state of California. But there's other permitted brands that are not safe and sane brand. So I think it's looking at those that are legal under California law would be prohibited here. So that, that's how I read it, and that's how I understood it. So I, I'm not seeing where the confusion is. So, but I'm certainly open to some wording if, if that would make it more, you know...
Can I get clarification on that, Alex? Because I know you've been doing a lot of research. Is safe and sane a brand, or is that what is allowed?
There is a brand, safe and sane.
Because I thought it was like TNT is the brand.
It, it is also a definite, defined term used in the health and safety code. So it is, I, I'm not sure if, you know, they also use it as brand marketing, but it is a defined term under state law as well. And so that, that's, you know, the ordinance references the definitions of safe and sane that are in the health and safety code as well.
And that's exactly how I read it. Thank you.
Do you just want to open to public?
Mayor, if, if I may. The decision of, of whether to place it on the ballot, I, I know, and I know you, you mentioned you were going to talk about the language itself, but the council is, still has a decision of whether the council wants to place this on the ballot at all. That is still something, obviously, the council can, can discuss about whether you want to place anything on the ballot or not. And we're also able to, any tweaks of the language or anything like that, obviously, we're listening to all the, the comments. And if the council would like to make changes, we could also do that. But it's really up for decision for the council.
Can we get a timeline? A, a timeline as far as, I mean, if tonight we agree that it's going to go on the ballot, can we come back and make some changes or is this it?
Well, you should provide the direction. Once you adopt the resolution, it's sort of done. So we, you could provide direction for the changes you'd like, and we could come back with a revised.
All right.
Language.
Thank you.
All right, let's open it up to the public. Councilmember Cruz, is your hand up for a reason right now?
Yes. If I may ask a question, Mr. Mayor. You just mentioned that the state has said that safe and sane is legal. So how is it that there is this document in front of us that would go against the state law? So, city attorneys, could you?
Councilmember Cruz, because you can, you can strengthen or go stricter against state law, but you can't, you can't make it more liberal.
Absolutely right.
So I, I still would like to hear more legality of it, Mr.
So for instance...
If I, if I may have, you know, the attorneys answer, please?
I just gave you the answer, but if I'm not smart enough for absolutely...
Mayor, Alex, either one?
The, well, Mayor, you're, you're correct. State law puts out prohibitions on, on, and, and whatever it allows, it does allow, in a lot of situations, it allows jurisdictions to be stricter than state law. You just can't allow things that state law prohibits. But you can definitely, for fireworks, for example, state law says they're legal, but they also allow jurisdictions to, to say that safe and sane are not legal in your jurisdiction. So you could be stricter, as mentioned by the mayor, but you, you can't be looser.
Public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So it says that jurisdictions can impose restrictions then.
Correct. Safe and sane. So they're allowed by the state, but jurisdictions can impose different restrictions. That's why you have several jurisdictions, even in the county, that prohibit fireworks and that they're able to do that just on their own because the state law allows them to do that. And, and just to note on the, on the language where we started, Mayor, was, and I definitely hear about the confusion, but where we started was also the term safe and sane. It is defined in state law. But just, I, I know the last time we came, I know that Councilmember Paula also had kind of a concern of even the term safe and sane, of the state potentially changing the definition or the name, safe and sane, to, to something else. And I think that that's what it was capturing, all fireworks. But definitely what you're saying is, you know, having folks at the, at the ballot, filling out their ballot and saying, wait a minute, that means if I vote, if I vote no, it'll allow bottle rockets and everything that I hate that my neighbors do or that, you know, whatever, right? So that's the confusion. I will also say, we will have to prepare an impartial analysis if the council does place this on the ballot. The impartial analysis would explain in detail what kind of, what state law says and what this ballot measure is actually doing.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Let's open to public comment. Does anyone in our audience have anything they want to add? Seeing none, and I see no attendees with hands. We'll bring it back to the dais. I'll go around the room.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to take a vote on it and then have further discussion about any language adjustments if the rest of the council is amenable.
Do we have to make the adjustments before the vote?
We have, oh yeah, do we have to? Can we, yeah, can we, can we vote on it as like yes or no to place it on the ballot and then come back and give instruction? Or do we have to do our?
Well, you, you can, you can have a discussion and just kind of state whether you want to place it on the ballot or not, just a discussion maybe amongst the council. Any formal vote of the resolution, I think that's what you're saying, as long as you don't vote on the resolution. Voting on the resolution and passing this resolution places this specific language on the ballot, and we couldn't make changes afterwards. But if the council wants to, as the mayor was saying, kind of a round table of discussing where do you want to go from here? And then if there's consensus that, yes, we want to move forward and we want to change the language, then providing directions to us on whether we do it tonight or whether there are more substantial changes that want to be made and it just gets continued. We still have, I think, a couple of meetings left before we have to place it on the ballot, before the, the county has their deadline.
Kind of six of one happen as in the other, from what I'm hearing? Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I read it. I think it's very clear. I think it makes sense. I think it's pretty much the direction we gave. I'm fine. I'm ready to move it forward and be done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to see this put on the ballot. It's long overdue. City council agonizes every year whether we should have them or not. And I think this would put it to bed once and for all. I would just like, the thing that bothers me is with the exception of permitted public fireworks displays, you know, I, digging down into the bushes, I think we need to tell people what that means, you know? How do they apply for a permit to be able to, to set off fire, fireworks displays?
And, and great, great question. And I think in, even in the ordinance, and again, the way this works, the question comes out there and it says fireworks display, but what it's doing is adopting the ordinance, right? The resolution places a question for the voters, but it's saying whether this ordinance that's attached to your packet, whether that's going to be adopted. The ordinance has a section regarding fireworks displays, and it does state that the city council shall have the power to adopt reasonable rules and regulations for granting of permits for supervised public displays of fireworks by a jurisdiction, fair association, amusement park, or other organization. Every such use or display shall be of such character and so located as not to be hazardous to persons or property. But it does leave the, there, there's still more work to be done, right? So if the, if the, the voters agree to this, the council would still be saying, okay, the next step is let's create our regulations for displays. And that's where those details would come in. And the only reason it's in the question itself is because instead of saying all fireworks are prohibited, the next question is, so if fireworks are prohibited, including safe and sane, what happens to displays? Are those prohibited? And that, that's why that was, that was put into the question.
Thank you. And just to add one thing to Jose, that language about, you know, approval from the city and the location that's not hazardous or, you know, that, that's language that's in the code currently for those public displays. And so, you know, the very similar language was just moved over to this draft ordinance.
Councilmember Cruz?
I, I already asked my question. Thanks.
So hearing what Councilmember Paula and Jose said, maybe the wording that I would be looking for would remove safe and sane completely and do state approved fireworks. So it's not confusing.
Isn't the safe and sane, it's like, where the...
They're approved by the fire marshal, but it's a state fire marshal.
It's a state fire marshal. So that would be the exact language. Yeah, state approved, but it would be through the state fire marshal.
And this, you know, it's up to the council, the reason to put the use safe and sane there, you know, that seems to be more commonly, and that's what the signs say when you're out buying, you know, they say.
And I will give, but I was just trying to take into account what Councilmember Paula had said, that if they change the name or anything changes, then are they legal?
Right. In the ordinance that uses safe and sane, it, it cites the health and safety code sections, and it says as those may be amended in the future. So that would cover any future amendments in, in state law.
So that, that would be the only thing I'd be looking for. It's something that was a little more clear about state approved or however state, state approved, same, safe and sane. But that's, I just don't think that the all fireworks is...
So, so through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, again, I think it's really clear. I'm prepared to read the resolution and move it forward, but if you feel, you know, strongly that there needs to be some tweaks, I, we could, I'm fine just having this come back to our next meeting with those modifications, so.
And this is the time I'd like to hear if people are against that modification. I'm fine, I just want to...
Well, I think it's clear based on state law, as, as our city attorneys have pointed out, it's right there and it gives the latitude, should they change the name, we still, it still references that section, and we would certainly have the ability to make those modifications. You know, but the, the reality is, I don't think safe and sane is going to go away, the term.
What do I look at? And it's, it's how, if I went to the ballot versus, you know, somebody in Del Webb that, you know, is against fireworks versus somebody who really wants fireworks, is it going to be confusing to them?
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to just really narrow down to where it clarifies.
And Mr. Mayor, would it capture your intent to say, shall an ordinance be adopted that prohibits the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks? And just take out the part that says of all fireworks including? Because that, that's already in the city's code and in state law. So, you know, the, the measure would be, you know, restating that, but it wouldn't be something new. So, you know, it wouldn't be dishonest or misleading to not include that in the caption. And of course, the impartial analysis would reiterate that that, those are prohibited still. still.
Yeah. Thank you, Alex, for explaining that. Because, yeah, now that I, and, um, Jose for bringing it to our attention, on page two of the ordinance, under section nine point four, four point oh four, I just reiterated, the city council shall have the power to adopt reasonable rules and regulations. So, yeah, we're, our job would not be over. So I, I think that with that provision, um, I can, I can support this tonight. I still think that, um, this is our job. This is what we're supposed to be doing. We could probably put that $15,000 to, um, better use. I'd rather actually give it to the service clubs to, um, to meet their, um, their fundraising, help, help bridge their fundraising gap. But, um, if it's the will of the council, I can, I can probably support it tonight.
And not to make this slightly more complicated, but if the council felt strongly, you know, like it was still confusing, we could, as I say, you know, sale and use of, uh, safe and sane fireworks within the city while maintaining the existing prohibition on fireworks if the council thought that provided more clarity to the public.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move. Oh, I thought we closed that.
Yeah. Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, and counsel. Uh, my, my question here is, I mean, we just have to consider the resolution to be on the ballot and, um, regardless of what is legal or not, the question is, are we going to allow it here in Cloverdale? So, I mean, I, I, I really think it's, it's not that complicated to say, okay, ban the sale of all fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks within the city. There's, there's, um, first, I would like to see it on the ballot and second, um, somehow including something that is not going to make us in, in, in violation of any law.
Mayor Lanza, I mean, you do have a member of the public who wants to speak. I know you already had public comment, but.
We already closed public comment.
Oh, we did.
Would you guys be all right if I let him?
Yeah.
Please.
All right. Dennis.
Hello?
Hi, Dennis, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, thank you. I, I pressed the, the, raised a hand a while ago, but for some reason it didn't recognize it. I appreciate you letting me speak. Illegal fireworks are already prohibited and public displays are already allowed, subject to obtaining the permit. The real question that you're asking the voters of Cloverdale to decide is whether or not they're going to continue to allow the sale and use of state approved, safe and sane fireworks. And that should be, if, if you want to place it on the ballot, that should be the simple question. Shall an ordinance be adopted that prohibits this, the sale and use of state approved, safe and sane fireworks? And leave it at that. That addresses Councilmember Walter's concerns about public displays. It also is, is plain, simple and clear to the voters what they're going to vote on one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no other hands, we'll bring it back. No comments.
No comments. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution by title, only a resolution of city council, city of Cloverdale calling and giving notice of the holding of an election on November eighth, 2022, to consider the city of Cloverdale measure to prohibit fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks, ordering the submittal of the ordinance to the voters at the election and requesting that the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors consent to the consolidation of this election with the statewide general election and previously called municipal election to be held on the same date and direct the register of voters to conduct the election.
And just to clarify, it is with the existing language, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then you are fine with the dates? Obviously we'll leave the dates for the arguments and everything as is?
So no changes in the language?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lanza?
Okay. G two, consideration for a 10th police officer position?
Mayor, just real quick on the, on the last time, I just want to note for the record that the resolution passed on a vote of four, four to one.
David, can we take a five minute break for staff?
Thank you.
We resume seven fifty. Chief, sorry.
It's okay. All good.
I looked over and I could see it, so.
All right, we'll reconvene at 7:50, moving on to G2, consideration for a 10th police officer position.
You're permitting the mayor, members of council, tonight there's going to be a presentation by our police chief, Chief Ferguson. The question I am considering proposal for adding a 10th police officer position to our Cloverdale Police Department. The question is important to what the approved staffing plan for the five-year period of 2018 to 2023.
And thank you, Alan. I do want to note before we get going that this, the request for adding a 10th officer has been before me since about 2019. I know the chief is going to touch on that, obviously because there was pretty significant economic uncertainty related to COVID and also the financial position of the city. The, the, the discussion was not brought forward to council, but given a number of factors, felt it was important to bring this item forward for, for council's consideration. What we're really seeking is your input in regards to whether to include funding for a 10th officer position within the, the draft budget that you're going to discuss this evening under item G3. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chief Ferguson. Chief's going to walk us through the proposal to add a 10th officer to our Cloverdale Police Department.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think David covered a lot of it that I was going to hit right here in the beginning, so I appreciate that. But I will add that there's quite a bit of information to process here with your attachments and the staff report and what's taking place tonight. So I've included this PowerPoint to hopefully streamline a little bit of the key points to this. And certainly, I hope it answers any questions that you might have. We had it. Okay, great. So I want to start with a little bit of a background for those of you that might not have been here when these conversations originally started about a 10th officer position. These discussions were originated in the 2018, 18, 19 fiscal year staffing plan adopted by the council. David mentioned it a little bit earlier. That 10th officer discussion continued upon my appointment to police chief, and it was very soon after that we started having these discussions about the need. In the staffing plan, it identified the addition of a lieutenant position along with one chief, two sergeants, and 10 officers, giving us a total of 14 sworn positions. On July 24th of 2019, the city council authorized a staffing reorganization of the police department by reclassifying one of those police sergeant positions to the position of a lieutenant. And that's where Lieutenant Chris Parker was promoted. But at the same time, the department also lost Officer Perez, who tested out and was hired by another organization. That left us with 12 sworn at that time. During the 2019, 2020 budget year, council authorized the second sergeant position as provided in that staffing plan with a concurrent reduction of an officer position to nine sworn. So that's when we promoted Sergeant Sal Berusso. He was hired from the outside to fill that vacant officer position when Officer Perez left. We were, and that left us with 13 sworn where we currently are at this point. We were never able to staff that 10th officer position. Some of the impacts that we've had to deal with since 2014 to current have really made a difference in how we operate as a police department. Certainly legislative impacts of AB 109 realignment that put a lot of prisoners back on our streets to and from the counties in which they came from, as well as Proposition 47, a significant impact from changes of felony crimes to misdemeanors that really made it difficult to have consequences for actions. And I think we still face that quite a bit today, as well as new mandated use of force legislation that has really put a lot of training emphasis on us as well. And all of this, of course, came with no state or federal funding to backfill the increased expenses associated with these new public safety mandates. Additional impacts, there's been growing concerns over the homelessness, PSP events, mental health subject, as well as wildland fires. There's also been increased response in incidents at the schools. And in 2019, again, when I was fairly new here, there were some initial talks about an SRO program with the then superintendent Jeremy Decker. Also impacting us are the injuries, illnesses, vacations, and training. At one time during 2021, we had one sergeant and four officers out at one time due to injuries or other medical-related issues. And that was detrimental to our organization, a significant amount of personnel. When we're absent like that, it makes it very difficult to provide a level of public safety that the community's been used to. These issues significantly impact law enforcement personnel who are often working numerous hours in response to those emergencies in combination with the already heavily burdened commitment of ensuring the public safety. Some of the more operational standpoint issues, which are out of our control, of course, by legislative mandates, they create staffing deficiencies. There are times where officers are working solo shifts, and I don't think I have to tell anybody up here the concerns with that when we deal with an armed robbery at our quick stop that resulted in gunfire. That's a very difficult time to have somebody working on their own. And we have multiple other cases where we can cite where that's a huge concern. This has also resulted in increased overtime. We're routinely relying on those that are off duty, enjoying their family time, being called in to have to fill those vacancies and work overtime. The unfortunate result of this is that it results in officer burnout. A lot of times, you start losing interest, you start not answering, you start not being available. What ultimately could lead, that leads to is increased workers' comp claims due to stress and fatigue. One of our biggest challenges operationally, of course, is backfilling for vacations, training, and these illnesses that I've spoken about. And the chart below reflects the three fiscal years that are represented here, and it kind of gives you an idea of the challenges we've had and how much expense we had to go to, to cover these backfills and these shifts. So in those three different years you see listed in the chart, the department requested $137,500 for overtime. Department actual, you see those numbers substantially larger than what we budgeted for. We were over budget there consistently. And if you look in the years 2019, 2020, we reached nearly $200,000 in the overtime budget. And mind you, this is just for the patrol staff. And so on average, we were $179,967 in our overtime budget over that, those terms listed there, putting us at about $42,000 in each of those budget years over budget. And I will tell you that the only reason you may look at our budget today and not see those numbers be close was because of COVID, because of sheltering in place, because we also put our officers at their residences responding when needed and for their own safety. So there was a substantial loss or reduction in that, but it's for those reasons and going into 2021 as well. I should state. Circling back to what I just said on the previous screen about 2019, we originally started the SRO discussions with the former superintendent. Sorry. We were never able to fill that position mostly because of staffing concerns with our organization. I just listed a bunch of those, but also once COVID came in, the school transitioned from on-campus learning to distance learning. And so the need shifted, if you will. But in April of 2022, the city and the school district revisited implementing the SRO position as a result of ongoing discussions with incidents at the schools. Past contracts with Cloverdi Unified School District, they agreed to pay a portion of the cost of one SRO. Now, the last SRO that was at the school campus was Mac Baker. And when I say SRO, he was officially an SRO. Rick Rhodes, Officer Rhodes, did participate in doing the GREAT and the DARE programs. However, he was not placed over there and was not considered an SRO by the terms that Mac Baker was. As part of those discussions with the school district, there was a development of the revised MOU. That MOU was originally written, and then some changes had to be made over whether or not there's a full-time position staffed over there or a part-time position staffed over there. And part of that revision included a $50,000 per year shared cost discussion by the school district. And I just want to add that tonight, I think David captured this, tonight, the council's not being asked to make any kind of decision on the MOU. It clearly is up here to be able to identify the important roles and responsibilities from the city as well as the school district. There's certainly going to be some changes that would need to be taking place here, and those will happen. And this will come back to you at some point, I'm sure. But the district funding provides the ability to assign a full-time school resource officer to the campuses. The funding also provided by the district would offset the total cost for the 10th officer to the city. The chart below here kind of helps give a cost analysis of what the total cost for the city would be with benefits for the officer. If you take a look at the chart up top, you'll see the word PEPRA or the acronym PEPRA there in the corner. Basically, what this is, is your Public Employees Pension Reform Act. And as of January 1st, 2013, any police officers that were hired would have to be under this plan that changed the retirement system and formula for whatever the city offered. Currently, as an example, the city, two classic members who were hired prior to 2013 get the 3% at 50 retirement formula, whereas PEPRA employees hired after 2013 are under a 2.7 at 57 retirement. So what you look below here is you'll see each of the officers that are hired and the current officers at our department receive five steps in the promotional process. So this reflects year one through five for those employees that would be deemed PEPRA employees if they were hired. And then the chart below reflects what's called a classic member through peers. That would be such as myself and any member hired prior to 2013. This also lists steps in years one through five of what the cost would be for the officer minus the contribution from the school. So you can see there where the city would, how much the city would have to, to come up with on the other end. I cannot tell you if the 10th officer is approved, whether that would be a PEPRA employee or whether that would be a classic lateral police officer coming over. It depends on a lot of factors, but I wanted to list them both here so that you were aware of the costs. So certainly, there's a lot of benefits. I've listed a few here, but I'm sure there could be a lot more of it. Certainly, the benefits of the 10th officer, it's going to reduce that overtime during the summer months when shifts need to be vacationed. A lot of times, our officers are taking those vacations, more than one, during the summertime when their kids are out. So this 10th officer would, would help in offsetting and reducing that overtime balance. Also, it would help in reducing the concerns for officer burnout that I spoke about earlier, which is a key factor here. And it supports officer wellness. I think this goes hand in hand with the officer burnout. It also provides additional support at community events. And obviously, it promotes savings to the general fund, both by the overtime savings and the contribution by the school. So one of the key benefits, of course, is the SRO would be able to handle all school-related calls and relieve our patrol staff from having to respond to handle those calls on a day-to-day basis. I do want to add some numbers for you here today, just to kind of let you know. But I want to make it very clear that you're going to hear some large numbers, but they don't reflect incidents at the school, but rather our activities that we do nighttime, daytime, every, in the morning of what we do around all of the school campuses. So in the high school, and this is for a one-year period, from yesterday to a year ago, there was 160 activities. Again, that's foot patrols, that's us going out at night, contacting people on the campuses at night, sometimes doing foot patrols at the campuses, sometimes even car stops on the campuses. And out of that 160, 21 at the high school were called to us so that we responded various things, vandalism, assaults, threats, and maybe bullying. And then at the middle school, there were 140. And out of those 140, 24 of those were calls where we've responded because of a variety of the similar type of, of activities. And then at the elementary school, 64 and five of those were called in for whatever type of activity. But again, I want to reiterate because I don't want to give the impression that there were 160 incidents at the high school. That is not the case. I'm just stating the activity levels, but I listed what calls that were there. One of the other huge benefits is the SRO, the SRO position builds rapport with kids. It builds strong relationships with the school staff, and it helps in the collaboration with building those relationships with our community. And that's hugely important right now, and I think we would all agree with that. It's extremely beneficial. The SRO also increases relationships with diverse groups of students. And it provides additional patrol support, and I think I covered this in the beginning, sorry to repeat, in the off-season when school is not in session. So some of the other cities around our county and/or even outside of our county who still have SROs, Windsor still has an SRO assigned to its schools. Roanoke Park still has an SRO assigned to its schools. Calistoga, St. Helena, and Lakeport all have SROs assigned to their campuses. One of the most important things about an SRO is the training requirements that they must have, not necessarily to be an SRO, but to be a police officer. And certainly, we would not sign anybody who is not a sworn peace officer in the state of California to that position. So let's start with the school peace officer per Penal Code Section 8, 32.3. This is what's considered the campus law enforcement course. It's very common, but it's also a mandatory course that an SRO must take in order to be assigned to the schools. It's a specialized course of training for school peace officers. Secondly, racial and cultural diversity training per Penal Code Section 13, 5, 19.4. This is not just relative to a school resource officer. This is relative to all peace officers in the state of California, ours included. Sexual orientation, gender, minority groups per Penal Code Section 13, 5, 19.4, same thing. This is relative to all of our peace officers in the state of California and would be relevant to whoever is signed to that position. Bias-based policing per 13, 5, 19.4 of the Penal Code, as well as persons with mental health, intellectual disabilities, and substance abuse, and persons with developmental disabilities and mental health. So you can see there's quite a bit of training that goes with this included in the SRO training as well. Oops, I guess I lost that last slide. And so the only thing I was going to end with here was, given the current workloads and staff requirements, it's recommended that the city council consider authorizing the addition of a 10th patrol officer to the department and include requisite funding in the fiscal year 22, 23 budget. Thank you. Welcome to any questions, if you have any.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So thank you, sir, just a couple of things. First thing, were the officer, the overall cost of the retirement? Or are you, are you, are you a special one?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, I, these mics, I guess, grew off. A couple of quick things, could you just elaborate a little bit more? It showed the cost to the officer, for the officer position, but it didn't distinguish that that is not a general fund, at least the entire part of the retirement would not be a full impact on our general fund. So I wanted to just make a note of that because I think that's an important factor. And the second thing is on the training. Those are specialized training requirements, but as you and I know, there's a lot of training prior to becoming a peace officer. So if you hire somebody, and I would like you just to maybe touch on that, just to kind of give the community a little bit of flavor, really, what the training is from the time you hire somebody.
Well, certainly. A, they would have to have a police academy, which is very intensive. There's two ways they can accomplish that. There's a year-long extended academy, or there's an intensive academy that's just under seven months now, every day of the week. And it recovers, it, it covers approximately 46 learning domains that you must master and that you must pass in order to pass an academy. In addition to that, multiple scenarios. And I can assure you that use of force and mental health crisis are big on the radar of police academies today and emphasize training in those areas. In addition to that, once you graduate the academy, then if you're fortunate enough to be hired by an organization, you go through a very thorough and intensive background. That takes many months to do. And then once you're hired, you go through a very intensive 14-week field training program, which is catered to our program, our policies, and we incorporate what they learned in the academy to how we operate and how we function as a city and a police department. We will certainly emphasize the use of force policies, dealing with mental health crisis policies. So there are, there's a lot to learn as a police officer today, much more than when I ever came in, much more than probably when the mayor started. He can attest, there is a lot more to it today.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure people understood there's a whole lot of training. Thank you.
One of the very first things you touched on was officer burnout, workers' comp claims. That was one of the things that, it really affected a lot of officers and deputies that I knew back in the day. We would work, I worked 300 hours a month, was my average month when I was there, and that was just me. When other guys would, would work, they'd get up into the 310, 320. And you would see a lot of officers that would have mental health issues, drinking, drugs. I think when I first started, it was an 85% divorce rate for males and a 60% divorce rate for their second marriage, and 100% for females that got married before they started the job. And it was due to this. They don't realize how much this job consumes you and destroys you at the same time when you're trying to do what's best for everyone around you. The thing that helped was always having people there to where you didn't have to be doing the overtime. The hundreds of hours of overtime drag, and you're doing 16, 20-hour shifts, you know, it, it takes a toll on you. And then you don't sleep when you go home. So the best thing you can do to save the good officers that we have and to keep them healthy and keep them here is give them support. And I think this 10th officer is what starts that. Now, on the SRO portion of this, I, as everyone knows, I was with the school district for a long time. And I saw with, I saw without. And it makes a heck of a difference having an SRO who can establish the rapport with students, who can handle a lot of the issues in-house versus in jail or in the back of his car. Because that's what a lot of that would end up, or it would advance because the kids don't have deterrence. They don't have any reason, a lot of these kids, to, to not commit these crimes or to be bad kids. And when you have someone that's there on campus that they can look up to, they can learn from, it's not about having a cop there to punish people. It's about learning how to get along, and that they're not there to, to arrest you. They're there to be your friend and protect you. And there's a big difference, and it's hard. I know people have talked about cultural issues, and I firsthand witnessed that. I'd walk in a house at midnight, and the little kids would go screaming and hiding in their bedroom because I was going to take daddy away. Well, that's not a good feeling for the police officer either, and they don't want that. So they want to try to stop that before it starts and, and make them understand that they're not there to hurt, they're not there to destroy families. No cop wants to destroy a family. And it truly begins with the SRO. And I, I'm a firm believer in this program, and I wish we would have had it two years ago. And considering what happened yesterday, having officer presence is the very first deterrent to any crime. And as you know, and this, what do they call it, the whole plethora, you know, your gamut of your tools, first one is, is your officer presence. And just knowing that there's an officer at one of the sites is going to make a gunman think twice about going because they don't know where you're at either. And so they always hit these what they call soft sites, as you know, places that don't have other weapons to protect people that they're going, because they're cowards are going to those sites to kill our children. If we have somebody there to protect our children that is equal or better than, they will think twice. So I completely support this.
And I certainly agree with everything you just said, 100% about all of it.
I'm, you want to go again?
Well, it's actually, I would just ask questions or clarification, but I didn't give my little spiel, so I'll do a spiel now, if that's okay, if this is the time. Well, you know, actually, I, I agree with everything you said. I, I, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that. You know, first of all, Chief, thank you, it was an excellent presentation. You pointed out a lot of good things. And you didn't even touch on the one thing is every year or every two years, there's required training, again, outside of what you just, that are required. You have to send officers to, to these training sessions. But with all that said, it's important to reemphasize the fact that we, before 2013, we had 15 sworn officers working within the police department. And, and because of the Great Recession and the impacts on the city revenues, we, we lost three positions. And it's, we'd never been able to recoup those. So even with this 14, this 10th officer, it's only going to bring the department up to 14. We're still one shy of where we were at back in 2013 as a city. So I really think it's, it's really important. I know the needs there clearly, burnout, the high cost of overtime. I mean, I know when you analyze and you, you run out the, the figure, you look at what does it cost for an employee? Well, it's, it's, it costs a set amount of money, but when you add overtime, which again causes job burnout, stress, and it really impacts officers' families and officers' ability to get rest and kind of unwind, but it's costly. You add, it's a very costly process. So it's not really the ideal way to backfill continuously vacancies for training, illnesses, and vacation. So we really need to rethink how we do that. And I really think partnering and collaborating with the school district has been so good. The SRO program has worked so well, both when we had Officer Bowen in the beginning and then Officer Baker. It was just a fantastic program. A lot of students I know at that time really developed good rapport, reported things that otherwise would have been unknown, and they were able to follow through, you know, this, with the families to try to work through where some serious mental health issues that were going on within the family environment. You know, promoting, promoting a school safety, working to help students that may have some behavior problems, working with the school officials on those, building that trust, the relationship between the students, invaluable. And, you know, I just think the, the other part is knowing that officers that are on duty, which again are limited based on our peer numbers, aren't going to be focusing on the schools because we have a dedicated officer there. So that's going to actually So that's going to actually increase community service within the police operation to the rest of the community, whether it's traffic, monitoring, you know, and just community outreach. So again, I just want to say this is long overdue. I totally support it. I think we need to move it forward, and I want to thank our school district for partnering with the city and collaborating because it's a win-win for the community, the district, and the city. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't have anything to add to that. Chief, great report, long overdue for that 10th officer. And eliminating overtime, you know, you have my vote for that, so I'm all in favor of it. Plus, not to mention that it's going to bring a resource officer back into the schools. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything to add right now?
No, thank you.
Open it up to public comment.
Question, Addison, both speaking personally and as a school board trustee.
Yeah, just hold the button down for a second. There you go.
Need me to say my name again?
You're good.
Okay. My interactions with the police department have been both in my personal life and as a school board trustee. I've been on the city school subcommittee for five years now, and my experiences with the police department have been overwhelmingly positive. The Cloverdale Police are overwhelmingly proactive, professional, and caring in our community. But understaffing makes a difficult job more difficult and jeopardizes the possibility of re-implementing an SRO in our school district. Without full staffing, the department can't address issues proactively. I don't mean this next thing in a trite way, I'm genuine when I use the term peace officer in reference to the Cloverdale Police. Please support this increase in staffing for our peace officers so they can proactively continue to make our community safe.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public?
Is it on? Okay. Hi, I'm Ashley White. I'm the school board clerk this year, but right now I primarily want to speak to you guys as a parent of multiple students in the Cloverdale District. And I understand this is about adding the 10th officer, but the SRO is a huge benefit that could come from this. So really, one of the main benefits of an SRO is really the comfort in knowing there's an additional level of security and safety for our students. And when I say safety, I'm talking about different levels of security, not only from potential outside threats, but also an additional layer of mitigation for all sorts of your typical student disputes, bullying, mental health crises, disagreements, everything. Every site, every school site, every school in our immediate area across the nation has huge issues with bullying, and that can go out of school to the home life and back. Another benefit is just the early positive interactions with law enforcement. This will foster more trust between these young and impressionable kids with law enforcement officers. Really, I look at the SRO position as essentially a community-based approach for a long-term goal, which is developing and encouraging these kids becoming contributing members to society after their school career is over. There's a real need for an SRO, and this, what you guys have in front of you tonight is an opportunity to bring, to start a collaborative approach between the city, the school, to providing our students and our community with resources and services that are very needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My daughter's also going to speak, so I'm just going to help her here.
Come on, kiddo, come on up, please. And don't go causing trouble up there.
Hi, my name is Kenzie White. I am in the fourth grade at Jefferson Elementary School, and I am on our student council. I think that a school resource officer is a good idea to have at our schools. Many kinds, many kids find themselves in a situation where they have a disagreement with another kid, and it sometimes results in a fight. If we had a school resource officer available to talk to or to intervene in these situations, the students would be more likely to not be in these situations to begin with. I also think the relationships that students could have with a school resource officer would help kind, would help kids understand that police officers are not scary or they're to only get you in trouble. Some kids may even figure out that they might want to grow up and become a police officer. Having a school resource officer will also help students feel safe while we are at school. Please approve the funding for this program to happen for our school. Thank you.
Great job, Kenzie.
I'm Bethan McLean, the superintendent of Cloverdale Unified, and many of the things that I wanted to speak to have already been said. I think as secretary to the school board, my main message to the council is that we want to make this financial commitment to support a 10th officer. We see the benefits of this collaboration as not just a solution or something that will strengthen our services in the moment, but really a long-term collaboration and something that we feel, if we're looking at early intervention and building relationships that will allow for a more supportive community, that bringing a resource officer in so that students begin to receive positive services, positive interactions, and in the long run, hopefully, we can minimize the amount of contact that our students have with police because we know that's a predictive factor, because we're problem-solving in collaboration with this important organization that's part of our city at an early level. We see the potential for the schools and the police to work together to communicate with families about early intervention, to encourage early intervention that we offer that sometimes families are less likely to accept because they might not understand, you know, the purpose or the benefits. There's really no downside to this, and I just wanted to speak to our financial commitment to contribute to this. So thank you. We appreciate you listening.
Thank you very much. I see one hand up in the attendees list.
Angela, I've given you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Angela.
Thank you. If the chief could please reiterate those phone calls. He went through it a little fast. I was trying to take notes. I'd like to know what the calls were that they received and that they responded to at the schools. We've been trying, I know myself, Mr. Lucetti, we've been trying since 2018 to get a school resource officer. It's very, very important. When I attended the walkout with the kids, I watched how the kids interacted with the police when they were instructed to, you know, stay on the sidewalk, return to class, things like that. They respectfully responded and reacted to the police presence. It's important that we have an SRO because it establishes those relationships with the kids so that they can understand what law enforcement really is, not what it's perceived. Washington School, it is a total disaster. What, Mr. Lucetti, in my opinion, and a lot of other people, was basically the SRO for that school. The kids respected him. He went above and beyond. He understood their issues. I saw that the police had on their presentation that there was a lot of qualifications that needed to be met. I'd like to know if any of our officers currently meet those qualifications, or if any of them are close to meeting all of those qualifications. And most important for city council and the school, does the cost really matter when it comes to the safety of our kids? Does the cost of an SRO really, truly matter at this point when it comes to the safety of our children and of our community? That is most important, that should be heavy on your shoulders. And if you have any doubt that the cost is a problem, then you should probably not be a public official. I was pretty shocked when the entire city council gave their feedback to the chief, except for Martha and Melanie. I was pretty shocked that the lack of care and concern for our schools and our children meant nothing. You can see they're just checked out. But thank you, Gus Walter, and Todd Lanz, and Joe Paula. Thank you very much. Melanie, I'm speaking. Don't violate my first amendment right. You can be quiet. I'm speaking to the council. You can talk when I'm done. But thank you, council, for taking.
She respond to any of the questions that she posed?
I will respond to, I do not have the exact statistics on those calls. I can certainly get those. I had the numbers. I will respond to, all of our officers are trained in everything that was on that slide, with the exception of the school resource officer post-certified course. We have one officer who would be ideal for the position that actually has that training and that certification.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public?
Mayor, I just want to remind you that we did receive a public comment via email.
Yeah, I'll read it right now. So we were emailed a public comment that wanted to be read under G2. The person's name, if you go to the bottom, is Rhonda Knowles. She's a Cloverdale resident and an employee of the school district. I'm writing this letter in reference to item G2 on tonight's agenda. The agenda item being discussed is to implement a school resource officer in our school district. In light of the tragedy in Texas yesterday, I feel even more compelled to write this letter. I'm currently an employee at COSD and have worked for the district for 23 years. I worked with the previous resource officer, Mac Baker. He was instrumental in building rapport with the students and the community. When the position of resource officer was dissolved, it affected our students greatly and not in a positive way. Currently, there is an outpouring of concern and a call for help from our teachers, staff, parents, students, and community members. I am included in this call for help. In all of my 23 years, I have not witnessed the behaviors that are currently occurring within our district. The shortlist is vandalism, drugs, bullying, threatening weapons, vulgar behavior, racist behavior, students wandering halls unsupervised, students walking off campus or hiding in off-limits areas, throwing items at students and staff members, setting fires, and disrespectful behavior towards staff and students. The staff members at COSD have asked for help and feel helpless and afraid at times on our campus. I am not including the above behaviors to point fingers at anyone. I am including them as a wake-up call to our community, council, and parents. We need support. As a community, we as a community are in this together, and the students deserve all the support we are able to provide for them. They are acting out and wanting us to pay attention. I believe that an addition of a 10th officer to our police force will benefit our district in a myriad of ways, the benefits of support, mentoring, building trust and relationships, and to cultivate a safe and supportive environment. A resource officer teaches councils and has the possibility to have positive interactions with each and every student in our district. Studies have shown that schools that have support have less truancy and a reduction of violence in a school setting. The benefits outweigh the fiscal cost. Our students are worth it. I ask the council to please show the students that they are worth the effort and the monetary cost to have a safe and supportive environment. There's no other hands under the attendees list, and so I will bring it back to the dais.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just see us direct staff to move forward with the 10th officer position and to move forward with the SRO position.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wanted to hold my comments until I, you know, heard from members of the public and, because I think that that's when we should have deliberations, not before. I think we should be asking questions before, and then we can deliberate and take, you know, comments into consideration before we actually, you know, make a vote. And the fact is, is that the first line of the staff report is tremendous concern, and it's a huge reminder is that we used to be fully staffed at 15. Is that correct? I don't have my glasses on anymore. I've got to take them off. That needs to be a council priority, just right off the bat. We are woefully understaffed, and I think that the last two years have exacerbated the level of stress and the level of strife and difficulty. I'm also not deaf to the concerns of the public regarding the middle school. I was stopped by my neighbor on, well, I was walking my dog this morning on the exact same subject. And I do have some concerns about the long-term re-establishment of an SRO in Cloverdale, and I'm very cognizant of the fact that this is a three-year arrangement. I think that as society as a whole, our country as a whole, and, you know, California and Cloverdale has, we've just, we've suffered so much. And the thing that I hear from teachers especially is that my kids went feral over two years. They forgot how to act. They forgot how to, like, you know, sit in a classroom, and it's a huge problem. And so, you know, for that reason, I am willing to support this tonight because I think that right now it's necessary to get us back to some level of normalcy. But what I would really like the school board to do is make sure that over the next couple of years, they're doing a tremendous amount of outreach to the community, talking to folks about the role of SRO, and to find out if it's something we want to continue long-term. Honestly, you know, I've heard the, I've heard mental health concerns come up amongst members of the council and members of the public. And the fact is, is that a trained counselor, those are the folks who should be dealing with, with mental health issues. And the school district needs to address mental health issues with a trained clinician, not an officer. But I do think that it is necessary in the short term. So I'm hoping that it does not become something that, it is a, that is something that we continue on indefinitely. I mean, the fact is, is that, yes, there are still cities around us who have SROs, but they are, the programs are being discontinued pretty widely across California and in other states as well. And schools are seeing the benefit of really going to a counseling model for, especially for interventions. And so that would be my instruction to staff, is that going forward, that this is to be looked at as a three-year program that gets revisited, and it's to address some really immediate needs that we have in response to going back to school, and issues that are not unique to the community of Cloverdale. So I can support this tonight, but I'd like to make sure that the school district, you know, also makes so many of these issues, that they make plans to intervene with trained clinicians and not just, not just law enforcement. So with that, you know, I feel like I can, I can support this tonight, but I would like to revisit it in three years and not see it as something that we necessarily do long-term.
Councilmember Cruz, I see your hand up.
Yes, I appreciate all the work done by the staff and the presentation by Chief Ferguson. I acknowledge many of the problems that are being faced in the community. However, I cannot support to add an additional officer to the force. There are many issues around that that we do not necessarily know. And at the same time, I do believe that in our new world, what we need is more health, mental health professionals, more counselors, and an emphasis on academic achievement, especially for the majority of the school population. I also would like to say... I also would like to say that we have to take into account, not only the finances, but also what is the makeup that we want in the future of Cloverdale? Not in today's Cloverdale, but in the future of Cloverdale. Every decision that we make carries on with a long-term vision, or at least it should. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You guys, any more comments or can I comment before? I'm not going to take that hand. It's, I repeat.
I, I would just like to say, what was our population back in 2013? I'll bet you it was right around the 6,000 mark, if I remember correctly. I don't have exactly the 6,000 and change back then, and we had 15 officers. To think that we have 30% more people now technically in our, at least, that are documented. I mean, the, if you look at the ones that aren't here listed on our census, we're a lot higher, and we have less staff, and we have so many issues. Absolutely, absolutely. We're, they're covering a much bigger area. You're right. I didn't even think of that. Thank you. And, and so it's, it just shows the quality that we have here, and we need to support them. And all I see, I mean, Quick Stop has been, had armed robberies done twice this year. Nothing like that has ever happened in Cloverdale. It just shows the direction we are going. It is the wrong direction. We need to support our community. We need to support our children. I, I, I work at the school. I coach teams, and I have never been so disrespected in my life as to the kids that are there right now. The, the brazen attitudes and comments that come out of their mouths to the staff at that school district is disgusting. I've watched them tell them to F you and F off when they're destroying things at the school. It is so bad. They need somebody that can help them take care of these issues from the beginning, so that it doesn't get to that point where they feel they have the, the power to stand up against the staff and against the adults and against the teachers, to, or against anybody in public, to teach them how to be good people and to trust and to, and to respect. We've lost that, and we need it back. And if it was up to me, I'd be giving you three officers right now. Because you, well, we're, we're given direction, and that would be mine right now, but, sorry. I'll stop there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a quick comment. You know, mental health is extremely important. I don't disagree with that. And I think collaboration with the officer, the SRO, working with mental health professionals is critical, and that is part of the program. But, you know, mental health isn't really some of the factors that the SRO is going to be dealing with. There's others. You know, you have people that are assaulting other people, bullying, people bringing unauthorized things like weapons on, on school campuses. You have people that are intimidating other people. Those aren't things mental health normally are going to intervene in. They're going to be working with people that have mental health issues, but there are other issues. So it's a collaboration effort between various professionals, and the SRO is going to be facilitating a lot of that, trying to reduce those concerns and work on those problems and, and try to make it all fit. So I, I don't think one overtakes the other. I think it's a collaborated effort that's going to continue. And people that graduate, there's new people that come in the next year. So the problems don't go away when a problem child leaves the district. There's maybe a new one that enters. So it's, it's a building that trust, getting to know the individuals, working with staff, working through this issue. I, I strongly support it, and I think we should move it forward. Thank you.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Let's move it forward.
So with this, under the options, it has the 10th officer position. Next, it has to review the draft for SRO, SRO MOU and provide direction on the next steps. I'll tell you, I, I know Councilmember Paula helped write it. I know I've read it and been part of the discussions. I'm 100% supportive. So I would be really interested to hear what anyone else has to say, to see if this changes or questions at this point.
I just, under item three, or under option three, I guess I, I don't, I'm not thinking of it as one, two, or three. I'm thinking of it as one, two. And, and I think under option three, I think we're, we're pretty clear as far as we need to be staffed up adequately, and we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't wait on that. Our officers deserve to have a reasonable expectation of having a workload that is doable by a normal human being, and it, I'm mortified to think that that's not what they have right now. I'm mortified to think that that's what the chief is having to assign people to do, is do what is above and beyond what, what you need, the, the amount that you need to work compared to the amount that you need to take care of your health and be with your family. I'm absolutely mortified by it. And I, you know, for that reason, you know, the police department takes over 50% of our annual budget. It's, it's usually between 51 and 53%. I think that that's something that maybe member, many members of the public also don't understand. And the pension liability, while we have PEPRA and we have, we have other, we, we have other advantages that, that other communities don't have, like the ad valorem tax. It, it doesn't mean that it isn't a really heavy lift for a community this, this size. So I would, I would want to see the staff also look at places where we can increase revenue and we can increase our tax base so that we can afford to have the staffing that we need now, not to mention what we would, what, what we, what we need, you know, for the future going forward. So I'd like to see further discussion about that, recommendations from staff, projections, and, you know, we'll probably need to make some very tough decisions to increase our staffing level. I mean, you know, and another option that other areas have gone, a model, other areas have gone to is a joint, is a JPA with other cities that also have independent police agencies. So it may be time that we, we really need to look at sharing some of the cost burdens with some of our neighboring cities that also have small forces. And I'd include, you know, the city of Healdsburg, which has their own independent police department. And all the city of Windsor, they're right now contracts with the sheriff department. But we, we need to look at ways where we have adequate, we, more, not, I don't mean just adequate, but, you know, fair and just staffing levels for our constituents, but also for our officers that do this, this hard work for us. The fact that we need to partner with the, the school district on an SRO to the tune of 50,000 a year, it just, it exposes the need. So we need to really buckle down and do the, the hard work of probably making some very tough decisions and looking at how we can get staffed so that it's a great place to be an officer again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So David, with this, is there any, you don't need a vote for this. This is just something you're going to bring back in the budget, correct? Or is this an item that you need a, I can't, I can't tell by the way that it's set up in the.
The, the, the direction staff was, was receiving tonight was to determine whether to include the cost of a 10th officer in the budget. So we wanted to, you know, this was an, an important enough issue to kind of pull apart from the budget discussion, and so that's why it's here tonight, to help inform your, your budget discussions that's going to come next. So I, I think what we hear from council is support for including funding for a 10th officer position, you know, within, within the budget. And, and, you know, based on the comments, that that would be our plan. What's not included in the agenda report is, is authorization to your city manager to execute the, the MOU. So we, we did want to get your direction on, you know, how to bring that forward. I think, you know, we want to ensure obviously the commitment from the school district in terms of providing, uh, funding support for it, and, you know, work out any final modifications or adjustments. And if you're, if you're comfortable with giving us direction to go ahead and do that, you know, it could even come back to you on consent with a resolution, you know, authorizing a signature of the, of the, the SRO MOU and, and, you know, concurrently seeking approval from the, the, the school district. So, you know, again, two steps really. One is putting, setting, setting in place the budget allocation and, and, you know, forming your budget process, and then secondarily, this SRO MOU, which would effectuate the program with the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request that we have a voice vote for hiring of the 10th officer, at least. Okay? As opposed to a all in favor.
Yeah, is, is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes.
Can you repeat the motion for the record, please?
We read the motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I'm requesting a voice vote for the hiring of the 10th police officer.
So you're making a motion that our budget supports a 10th officer?
Thank you.
Councilmember Paula?
Second, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passes by a vote of four to one.
And David, do you have direction for the SRO MOU, it sounds like, and could be brought back on, on consent? And if there's any issues, we can pull it at that point. Great, thank you, and thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Moving on, G3, discussion and consideration of the city of Cloverdale draft budgets for the fiscal year '22, '23, and '23, '24.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of council. What we're going to do tonight is walk, walk the council through a, a presentation. This is going to follow the presentation that was, was provided at the budget workshop, again, recognizing that, you know, not all members were, were able to attend the budget workshop, but also to provide some additional detail around the budget that was based on the feedback we received at the workshop, mainly in terms of how, how those recommendations affected your fund balance. So we just want to make sure we go into this budget with, with our eyes open. And if I can ask our, our city clerk to go ahead and, and screen share the PowerPoint presentation. All right, thank you, City Clerk Maloney. Go ahead and, let's, let's move, move to the next slide. All right, so discussion tonight, again, just a brief, I'm going to go through this really quickly, so I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this like we, we did at our budget workshop, so please let me know if you want me to pause, if you want to take more time to discuss anything. But real quickly, I want to just give an overview of, of our goal-setting process, particularly because this is our first year that we are, we are bringing forward a multi-year budget, you know, multi-year budgets. We're bringing forward, really, you can, you can, we often refer to it as a two-year budget. I think it's more accurate to say it's two one-year budgets, because each of those fiscal years will have their own independent financial audit. Also to talk about, you know, how the goal-setting process informs the budget discussion, overview of top budget themes and goal statements, followed by a review of the fund balance. We're going to talk a little bit about revenues, just want to highlight that. And then, again, give council overview of some of the significant departmental budget updates. Next slide, Mike? All right, so one of the important functions of goal-setting is to, to really help inform your, your, your budget development process. The goal statements are reflected in, in the funding initiatives, how we allocate staffing. So we heard that tonight with discussion about 10th officer. And, and ultimately informs your operational budgets and particularly the programs and projects that we, we undertake. Next slide. Okay, again, the, the move to a multi-year budget is, there, there were some key goals there, and, and one of the, the key outcomes is, is to save time and effort, not only, not only council time, but staff time in the budget development process. With, with the utilization of now the Open Gov, it really makes the budget development process a lot more straightforward, and we think this is key. I, I can say probably the, the time developing the budget and all the paperwork that was required to transfer between us is about cut in half. So it, it's going to save a lot of time and effort going to a two-year budget process. But, but more importantly, I, I think is, is, is you'll see as we walk through this, having a two-year budget, it gives you a little bit of a longer time horizon, and it gives you a, I think, a better perspective on the fiscal impact of your, your spending decisions, and also how it affects your, your, your expenditures and your revenues, you know, over a 20-month, 24-month period rather than a 12-month period. Next slide, Mike? So one of the things I think staff has really endeavored to do is to, to focus on, you know, what, what do we do and why? And reflected in the goals is, is a, we really took a work-plan-based approach. I think everything in the budget is reflective of, of the goals that the, the council wants to achieve for the ben- benefit of the community. So, you know, it's, it's really about intended outcomes, whether it's improved or enhanced safety for our community, better roads, better parks, improved water conservation. You'll kind of see that enumerated throughout the, the budget. So I'm going to go ahead and just move forward to budget themes and goals, Mike, if you want to kind of push forward. Our, our current budget goal statements included in the budget include the, the, the six goals included on the slide. You know, one of the key goals over the last fiscal year was focused on economic recovery from the impacts of COVID-19. And so that was a, been a particular focus of staff, was working on, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan Act and how we're addressing what were some key declines in, in some of our revenue, and looking at, you know, revenue enhancement. Obviously, one of the things we were able to achieve was the renewal of our utility user tax, which was very significant, and we'll, we'll touch on that later. Public safety and emergency preparedness, that was, that, we, we really invested a lot of time and energy in, in public safety and emergency preparedness over the last year. So that's a goal that, again, that embodies what we, what we spent our time on over the last year. I want to really acknowledge the work that Chief Ferguson led up in terms of renewing our, and updating our emergency operation plan, leading up discussions in Resilient Cloverdale, and some of the Resilient Cloverdale initiatives around developing our evacuation planning efforts and our emergency response for some of the significant emergencies that we know affect our community. You also see that in our local hazard mitigation plan that the, the council adopted. Likewise, in, in the area of housing and homelessness, we, we, we kind of re-initiated the homelessness planning effort with our local community advisory group with strategic plans. So we, we've, we spent quite a bit of time there, and likewise, you know, began focusing in on addressing affordable housing. You know, we, we, I know Kevin spent a, a number of hours on, working on the Cherry Creek Village project, which, you know, in the very near future, we're going to be having an open house and be able to see the, the outcome of the, that, that, the time spent on that project and investment that the community's made. Moving forward, inf- infrastructure and technology, we, we actually have completed over the last year and a half, pretty significant infrastructure projects, whether it was repaving the taxiway at our airport, completing our Safe Ratsa School project along the boulevard, completing the vista view slide repair, and our, our treadway signalization project. And then, and then last but not the least, planning and sustainability. We're, we're well into planning for, really, what's a major sustainability project in the turnkey effort with PG&E and upgrading a number of our facilities and our energy use at our water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. We, we fully brought online the, the TESSA backup battery system at our wastewater treatment plant, all of which took a, a lot of time and effort, and it's all kind of, you know, behind the scenes, but that's, that's going to, expected to, you know, save the, the city somewhere between $20,000 and $40,000. you know, save the city somewhere between $20,000 and $40,000 annually in energy costs. So moving forward, we know that one of the significant issues that kind of rose to importance was drought response. And really, that's kind of the key difference between the goals that you saw this year and the goals going forward, and investing in how we respond to the drought. And so that's a key reflection in the budget, is our investments in how we're going to promote water conservation, water development projects, you know, in particular with the DWR grant, or the grant that we received from DWR, and, you know, enhancing and supporting our local water supply, and/or addressing how we're going to be more responsive to the need to conserve water. I think Councilmember Bagby, you spoke to the need to focus on revenue enhancement, and, you know, I kind of put that under the category of economic development. You know, the council has annually supported funding for the Chamber of Commerce, and I think one of the key outcomes is, you know, promoting the city as a nice place to live, and a nice place to conduct business, in a way to help support, you know, our quality of life and enhance our revenues. And we know that the, you know, the effort around homelessness and addressing our housing needs continues with the development of the, our next eight-year general plan housing element, and hope to finally bring to fruition a final homelessness strategic plan. Again, continuing our investment in key infrastructure projects, we want to note that council is supportive of a number of significant investments, particularly in parks, but not only in parks, in parks programming. You'll see some of that again in the budget. And again, continuing with the themes of planning and sustainability, as well as emergency preparedness. So with that, I'm going to kind of jump from goal statements and kind of get into kind of some budget numbers, and I want to, next slide, Mike? Want to touch, go, next slide? Keep going? Of course, what's critical to our budget is our revenue sources, and I want to make sure to give council an overview of the revenues that really drive our ability to fund projects, activities, and programs in our budget. One of our key revenue sources, of course, is sales tax revenue. And what you see here is our forecast projections that are provided by Avenue. Avenue is our sales tax consultant. We use them quite a bit to help us with our sales tax forecasts. We meet with them quarterly to review changes in business activity. We look at all the businesses in our community, and really go through the list and identify where there is, you know, where we see changes in business activity, and that helps inform our sales tax projections. So we take directly from this report that you see in front of you. For fiscal year 22, 23, you see the cash projection there of $1,238,000. That is directly in the budget. That number is what you'll see in the sales tax category. And likewise, for fiscal year 23, 24, you'll see $1,279. What that is, what you can kind of see with this chart is, you know, the annual increase in growth in retail sales tax. You can see, it's relatively modest. It's, you know, trending really between, you know, 4% to 3%. And you can kind of see, in '24, '25, they're kind of projecting a little bit of a slowdown in some economic activity. So again, just to point, you know, how these numbers come about in your budget is, you know, with the assistance of professionals that really look at your, look at our numbers, and look at changing economic conditions, and we plug these numbers right into your budget. Next slide, Mike? Some key things that I also want to talk about on the revenue front. One of our major revenue sources is property tax. In '22, '23, we're forecasting that we'll receive just a little over $2.9 million in '22, '23, followed by about a $52,000 increase in '23, '24. Those are, again, modest increases of 1.9%, relatively, again, modest. We have seen in the past where increases in property tax revenue has gone up as, you know, an upward of 5% or, you know, 4.8%. But usually, that's a couple where we see projects that are going to be coming online, projects that can note, for example, that we've seen changed property taxes include things like Grocery Outlet, Vine Ridge, you know, kind of your major projects, they add to your assessed value, and then likewise adds to the amount of property tax revenue. And Mayor, you had a question?
Just really quick, I wanted to comment. Councilmember Cruz had to leave her meeting right now. She's no longer with us.
I've already reported on sales tax. I, and I really want to point out, you know, under cannabis revenue, you'll see that it didn't include 20, we didn't include '22, '23, '23, '24. The revenue that we identified in our current budget was $480,000. I don't think we're going to, we're going to meet that target, given the change in the cannabis revenue tax rate. And going forward, I think for the next two years, we're forecasting receipt of about $70,000 per year. So it's a pretty significant reduction, and one of our major revenue sources that was a result of, you know, policy change. So I just want to note that, that's a big change in revenue that was, is, you know, impacting the revenue side of our budget. Spoke a little bit about the renewal of the utility user tax. When we brought that forward for voter approval, we estimated that we received revenues about between $425,000 and $450,000. We've seen some growth in utility user tax. I think as more residents have moved to conducting business out of their home or staying at home, they're using more utilities, and therefore, revenue is, you know, forecast to increase in that category. One of our other major revenue sources is TOT. That's our, you know, otherwise can be called our hotel tax. We're forecasting that to be pretty flat over the next two years. That's an area, in terms of talking and evaluating economic development and growth, you know, we can maybe focus on how we can get those numbers up, get more lodging in Cloverdale. But we do expect that to continue to be impacted. While, not a general fund source, I did just want to kind of note here, SB1 road maintenance funds, that was on the agenda earlier tonight. You know, we expect to end the year with about a fund balance of $66,000, so not a lot. While we're receiving about $208,000 in funds, you know, some of that, a big portion of that's going to pay for the Fourth Street reconstruction project. So next slide, Mike? A little bit about a fund balance review. So just as a reminder, there is a number of funds within your budget. Of course, you know, one that we often focus on is your general fund. But there are a number of other funds that comprise, you know, what is roughly your $20 million budget, your $20 million annual budget. It includes certainly your general fund, your two other major revenue sources are funds, include, are your enterprise funds, so that's your water and your sewer funds. Included in that is your airport fund, and then really a whole host of special funds, impact fees, you know, SB2 planning grant fees, measuring parks, and those are all critical funding sources to fund various programs. One of the things that was really, next slide, Mike? Kind of really wanted to note is, you may recall, you had a presentation on the fiscal year 2021 budget, you know, so our beginning fund balance really increased by about $1.2 million. So where the, there's kind of an audited number that reflects your beginning fund balance for the current fiscal year is the $6,623,608. It's, I know it's kind of tough to see in that slide, but it's the top left-hand corner. That's one of the highest beginning fund balances I've seen since, at least I've been with the city for, you know, six years now, partly because of the receipt of American Rescue Plan funds. We are expecting to end this current year up about $431,000. That is a big reflection of the deposit of approximately $1 million from ARPA money into the general fund. We'll review quickly where council has at least decided to allocate that money. But I just want to note that that $1 million, if it was not in our general fund, what we'd be looking at in this current fiscal year is a deficit of about $570,000. So it just kind of gives you a perspective of how that ARPA money positively impacts your fund balance. And where you see that is to the right, where it says assigned or reserve face, fund balance. It's about $3.8 million. You know, roughly $800,000 of that is the ARPA money that's kind of parked in there, that's allocated for other purposes. So, you know, we're estimated to kind of end in a net positive position at the fiscal year at about $6.6 million. And what that does is, that's the number that we roll over to be your beginning fund balance in fiscal year 22, 23. But what we start to see in this next fiscal year, despite parking the additional million dollars of ARPA money currently in the general fund, we start to see operational deficits. There is an operational deficit in this, the new fiscal year of about $645,000, and likewise, in '23, '24, about $865,000. So I really think this is an important table to look at. You can really kind of identify how your expenditures are affecting your fund balances across all those funds, and it also gives you an idea of, you know, how you might look at some alternative funding for certain things, recognizing that there are legal constraints on how you use certain funds, for example, impact fees. So some of the key takeaways, Mike, next, could you skip about three slides forward? And is that, you know, over the two-year period of the budget, you know, you're looking at a decline in the fund balance of about $1.5 million, which, you know, is fairly significant. You know, nonetheless, the fund balance is much higher than it has been, at least in the last about 10 years. Likewise, we're also seeing fairly significant declines in your water enterprise fund, and it's about even in your wastewater enterprise fund. I encourage you to take a look at, you know, OpenGov. You can really go into each of those funds and look at, you know, expenditures, you know, on a real line item basis, and, you know, we're here to help and give you any feedback you'd like, or any detail to kind of help inform that. So, but what we weren't planning tonight is to necessarily walk through, you know, all of those line item expenditures. Next slide, Mike? Kind of, you know, some key things we want to talk about. The budget that is included in your packet didn't include any full-time staffing. Obviously, council tonight authorized addition of a 10th officer, so we'll build that in. What also is not included is the cost of living adjustments. So we know we're engaged in labor negotiations right now. If council grants any cost of living adjustments, it's going to, it's going to have an impact on those deficits that we already reported. Likewise, just wanted to note that the, there's about $1.8 million American Rescue Plan revenue that's assigned for future projects. You know, you're getting a total of about two. Some of that was to cover expenses that we incurred in the general fund, so it did help a little bit with the general fund. But again, those things are allocated to other purchases, are allocated for other items that may be in other funds that won't necessarily bolster your general fund. But there are some strategies that we can look at and planning that we can do that may, for instance, help address your general fund. For example, council, I know, supports funding infrastructure with ARPA money. Maybe we look at those as loans that are, can be paid back by the enterprise funds, you know, when the timing and the revenue is appropriate. So next slide, Mike? I just want to touch real quickly again. This is the table or matrix that identifies the American Rescue Plan Act allocation. Again, we're going to receive about, in total, $2,070,000. A big portion of that is allocated to public infrastructure, about $1.8 million, with the remainder going to the, I would say, the general fund, and a portion of those were kind of one-time allocations for some of our nonprofits, for some of the services that they provided during COVID. So during the budget workshop, we, next slide, Mike? We walked the council through, you know, and gave them an overview of some of the, just, you know, the kind of the major changes in the budget that were included in the two-year budget document. So next slide, Mike, just real quick, I'll walk you through. So Cloverdale, in the city manager's budget, there includes expense for both years of continuing our Cloverdale Connect. Likewise, council facilitation services and workshops, and some expenses for consulting with R3 for solid waste. Moving to community development, next slide, Mike? Council expressed a real interest in grant writing, so we've included in the budget $25,000, specifically in community development, that could be utilized to fund grant writer for community development-type initiatives, park initiatives. Likewise, we have $50,000 in there for code enforcement, Building 35 for building fee update, $100,000 for development review support, that's again ongoing, $25,000 for a rate and apportionment study, that's to assist with formation of a community facility district, and kind of ongoing expenses that we've had for sometimes sequel planning assistance of $20,000, and then our contribution towards the completion of the housing element. At the workshop, we spent quite a bit of time, next slide, Mike, discussing the parks division within our community development, a number of expenses here that we are relatively new or one-time. We included painting for the senior center, brush chipping at our parks, preventative tree pruning, repaving the parking lot at Second Street City Park. One area that we spent a little bit of time on was talking about, you know, kind of seed funding for helping establish a recreation department within parks, and, you know, starting to be able to plan and purchase equipment. You know, moving on, I think there was quite a bit of discussion about purchasing a chipper, which we, you know, was a $68,000 expense along with a dump truck of $60,000. So go ahead and move forward. And our finance, and I say, you know, IT department, we are seeing some increased expenses there, particularly related to some of the enhanced security and other IT improvements for ensuring that we have appropriate, you know, IT secure systems. And these are some kind of increased expenses, and we're going to be bringing forward a contract with KLH that will really outline in detail the expenditures that we are proposing for council's consideration. Moving on to police department, $50,000 in the budget for the Clover Ready and emergency preparedness, and then other items really to continue some of the contract services that we have historically provided based on agreements by council. We did note that council authorized using reserves for the purchase of the new police car, so we were going to take that, reduce the reserve balance for new vehicles to purchase our new police vehicles. And then likewise, in our, in our public works department, we did include an item in the amount of $80,000 using impact fees to develop a plan for, or develop a capital improvement program for Osti Road. And we And we increased the budget for annual striping and pavement maintenance from 100,000 to 200,000 with the inclusion of Measure M funds, which I think is a tremendous need that we have in our budget. So, next slide, Mike. And go ahead and go to the last one. So what we're asking tonight is to get council's direction on any recommended changes or further updates to the draft fiscal year 22, 23, or 23, 24 budget, and whether you'd like to direct us to bring back a final budget at your next meeting on June 8. Certainly, you could, if you don't want to make any changes, say it looks good, bring back a final version, and we'll, we can put it on the consent calendar and you can approve it as is. If you'd like to have additional deliberation on the budget, we can bring back further discussion at your next meeting. And we can also plan for adoption then, or for final adoption at your last council meeting in this current fiscal year, June 22. We do recommend, we, the staff will feel much comfortable adopting, if council is in a position to do so, recommend adopting on June 8, just so that it's, budget's in place, you know, well before the end of the fiscal year, June 22. Just gets, starts to get a little close before we have to take special action to ensure we have funding ability within the next fiscal year. So with that, I'll, I know, walk through it really quickly. I know we covered a lot of this at the budget workshop, but we did want to provide the opportunity to make sure that council had opportunity to provide any final feedback or adjustments that you think are important. There are a couple of things that are in the works that we haven't fully finalized yet. There's a tremendous interest in the possibility of adding a position in parks. We are working on a MOU with the county for the maintenance of River Park. And we are finalizing our cost projections for providing that service, and that will help inform what kind of general fund contributions may be necessary to add a parks position. And if we're successful in our efforts, you know, we might be able to fully fund a parks position without, without general, without the addition of general fund. That would be our hope, but we're still, we're still finalizing the, our work on the MOU. So that's, that is not included in the budget currently. But we know there's definite interest in that, and so that would be an area where we would, we would bring that back for council, council support. But I'll kind of pause there, Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to ask you, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. Go ahead.
Turn your microphone. I'm sorry.
Michael, and I'm like, where's Michael? He's over there. Sorry, it's getting late, sorry. And thanks for taking my question first because it's an immediate follow-up to what you were just saying about, okay, it's really late now, I forgot. What was the last thing you were talking about?
A parks position.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Well, I actually had that marked in my packet for further clarification. Oh, I know, there were two prongs on that. One is justice, I'm not truly sure what it means as far as the status is because, so it's still, it's still proposed, but it's not in the final budget.
That's right. We, and, you know, of course, you know, it would be ideal to, you know, if there's tremendous support, to add that position. I think there's certainly a need for it. It was really about the final costing that needs to be done, and the work we need to do with, also with the labor groups in terms of adding a position and the salary classification. We just want to fine tune that and be in a position to bring forward, you know, realistic numbers and show also what, what revenue sources can fund that position.
Okay, so that clarifies that, because I just wasn't like, wasn't sure about the status. And the reason I ask is that, I mean, in my mind, it affects so many other areas, and specifically fire safety, is making sure that we have the ability to manage the properties that we have. I mean, our parks are like one of our biggest amenities, they're one of our biggest benefits. They're also, it's not cheap, so, but they really have to be maintained, or they quickly can become a detriment. And then my second question was on the MOU with the county. Is that kind of, is that like a net gain for us? It sounds like it is, but I'm not hearing it explicitly spelled out. It's like, it sounds like it would be, a contract with them would be to our fiscal benefit.
Well, right now, included in the budget is the addition, let me say it this way, we anticipate receiving at least $35,000 in reimbursement revenue from the county for maintenance of River Park. One of the key changes is that they are adding a public restroom, there is additional vegetation management. So what we've been looking at is the amount of time that it will take our staff to maintain that park, or that section of River Park, and doing the costing analysis based on the amount of time that we know it will take to maintain the park, so that the costing analysis is a fairly real, a very realistic picture of what it costs to maintain River Park. And what, what I expect is we are going to see a fairly significant increase in what the current cost is, 35,000, to a much more significant number. And we obviously want to make sure that the county supports it, and we'll be bringing that MOU to council for your, for your input, you know, starting with subcommittee. And of course, that will, that will help also to inform our ability to afford this new park position, or at least identify a revenue source that can help fund the park position. And likewise, if there needs to be a additional general fund contribution, what that would look like. But, you know, kind of, I look at it kind of like what we did tonight with the police 10th officer, or what we've done previously, is we'd bring forward, you know, the job description and, and the salary classification that would show the true cost, and then show how, what are the revenue sources that would support that, so that we have really good, solid numbers. One of the funding sources that is accounted for in the budget is the Measure M Parks Fund. We are forecast to receive about 135,000 in Measure M Park funds, and council had allocated 50% of the, those funds towards staffing, so we know we've got about 65 for staffing, which, you know, we could fund part-time staff, but we know and believe there's a real need to get a full-time person. So what additional funds that we can receive through this increased contract with the county to help, again, fund that parks position. And we're getting close, we're, we hope to have a draft agreement that we can bring forward, because we know time is of the essence, and we do want to get that.
It just sounds like if you have that contract in place and you have the predictable measure M funding, that you can really know that your, your funding for that position is very secure. So that's, yeah, that was my question, so thank you. It sounds like it's just proposed because we haven't ironed out all of the, we haven't ironed out the contract with the county yet, and ironed out some of the details, but...
Right, right. We, we want to make sure we get the, I mean, we feel strongly about our numbers, we want to make sure that...
See if there's some agreement with the county.
If the county doesn't, doesn't balk, and then we can really finalize our costing for the position. Again, in an ideal perspective would be we funded 100% from other sources, not general fund. But we're just not quite there yet to make that statement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, along the same lines, talking about the MOU with the county for that River Park, you know, that's going to be a multi-year contract with them. I'd really like to see us put some COLA increases into that contract, so in year two, there's a little bump on what they pay us, because as you know, we're going to have to increase our employees' wages. So I'd like to see that going forward.
And great comment, Vice Mayor. In fact, that's a very discussion we had, was building in those COLAs, and it's about what's the right percentage. And again, we're just trying to, you know, try to get it as close to realistic as possible, so what we're bringing forward matches reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of, thank you for the presentation, a lot of information, a lot of needs of the city, not a lot of money to fix all the things we want to do. But with that said, I still support strongly that we move forward with our budget showing the full-time addition of, for one more full-time in the Parks Department as well. And I would even entertain maybe rethinking how we're divvying up the Measure M funding, instead of 50%, maybe raise the amount towards salary for the new position, because it contributes so much to the infrastructure of the parks, which is one of the big assets we have. And that could be revisited once this contract's nailed down. Because I think really, the question is, we need the staff now. We need it, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and not a lot of staff to do it. And I hear complaints, so I'm sure everybody here does, why is this not being mowed? Why is all this vegetation? And the guys, it's on the board, we just don't have the staff. And so I really think we need to rethink it, especially with the fire, the vegetation mitigation, all the needs and all the demands on our park staff. We really need to get that third person. So maybe come back with a plan that reallocates the Measure M Fund to fund it, where it doesn't necessarily impact the general fund as much. Couple that with the lighting and landscape fees that were, that go towards the parks to see how it all pencils out. And then once, we could revisit how that's allocated, once the contract is worked out, that may be a month, it may be six months, we don't know how fast that's going to move. And I'd hate to see this dependent on that. So I'd be more open to see us come back with another way, at least to get this implemented, and then revisit it once the contract comes through for us. And I'd like to just talk a minute about the chipper, because the reason I really feel that's an important asset to the city is vegetation management is huge. And when we have the chipper, a lot of the chippings can be done onsite, which reduces the staffing needed, because I've seen the crew out there with a flatbed tractor loading stuff up, they had to haul it down to the courtyard, unload it, come back, where this could have been chipped right in spot, right in place. So staff is money, and if we're getting, you know, 10 hours of chipping versus five hours of chipping, that's a big deal. So I think being, you know, the equipment we need, if you want the staff to do the job right, they need the right equipment to do the job. So I'm looking at that as a one-time cost, I recognize there's maintenance that goes with it, but we need it. And it's not, when you mentioned, and every time we get a number, because at our budget workshop was between 50 and 60, now it's up to 68,000. The longer we talk about it, it'd probably be 71,000, so I don't know. But with that said, we also had contract money in there to contract it out. So really, it's not going to be a full 68,000, it's going to be reduced, because the contracting for the chipping would go away, because we'd be able to do that in-house. So we'd free up more staff time to do more work in the parks, coupled with being able to do things on location. So I really think those important pieces of equipment, it's kind of like you need it to do the job, that we're pushing our staff to get done. It needs to happen. So I'd really like to see those somehow worked back in, I really think they're important. With the vegetation management, the threat of fire, we really need to take vegetation management serious, so, yeah.
I mean, Councilmember Paula, the chipper is in the budget.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Well, I thought when I saw it there, it, I didn't know it was funded. I thought it was be asking for direction. So that makes me feel better, so I'll take it all back, move on. I misunderstood that piece, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to just go through a few things, David, that I'd like to have you clarify for me. The water enterprise shows huge losses every year, and it obviously compounds. Why? Why is it such a huge loss?
Yeah, well, I think one of the big changes this year, and we're, we have the DWR, multi-benefit grant, drought grant, and part of it is the timing of the expenditures and the reimbursements, I think that's, that's part of it. I think, you know, we really haven't funded any, any significant capital improvement projects, so I think it's partly a reflection of the need to bring rates up, to, to help offset what were some of the just routine expenditures for operation and maintenance. But we did have some impacts this year, particularly on the revenue side. You know, we, council did approve the rate adjustment, we were tracking revenues very carefully, or very closely, and, you know, because of the conservation requirements, we, we saw a pretty significant decline in our water rate revenue. And likewise, we had a number of additional expenditures this year just related to our drought response that were, I mean, obviously droughts may become more common, but they were kind of extraordinary in the sense we didn't, we weren't, we weren't having those expenses before. And we've, we've had a lot more expenses related to hiring consultants to help us with addressing the curtailment order, the ongoing drought response, all the additional reporting requirements. So it's been a combination of increased expenses and decreased revenue that have particularly impacted us, and some of it, again, getting back to, is the timing of some of the grants. But I also want to make sure I have the opportunity for our, our finance director to weigh in.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that a lot of the bigger projects are in these, in these years that are coming up soon, because we just did the five-year CIP project, while the $3 million grant revenue is in the water, separate, it's split out based on how the expenses are. So we're assuming if we spend a dollar, we're going to get a dollar. So that's spread out over four years, and I think probably, yeah, it's the delayed maintenance that we're, we keep trying to, you know, spend 200,000 on meters, and we're just trying to get up to speed. So I would say that that's the, that's the biggest issue, is just trying to get everything up to par.
Where we should have been over the past few years. The next one, the inclusionary housing had an $81,000 deficit.
So inclusionary housing...
I'm sorry, let me see, I'll tell you right now. Three?
The inclusionary housing only has expenses, there are, there is no revenue, so anything that happens in that department, which currently is some of the salaries for our assistant city manager, community development director, and I'm thinking that there's someone else in there, but I'm sorry, I don't remember it right off the top of my head. But there is no revenue that comes in, we're just, we're just using it for the salaries.
A lot of this, I'm just trying to get out there, because it shows huge numbers, and so I want it explained. And the third one is the RDA successor agency shows the $97,000 deficit, if you could explain that one as well.
The redevelopment is, it kind of ebbs and flows depending on when the payments come in. We are, we know for sure that the final payment in 2032 is, we're not going to have the revenue for it, we're trying to ramp up to that so that we have the money, so there's deficits happening. So there's deficits happening. And the money that we're allocated now is supposed to pay for a future payment. We're using it, we're kind of, we're using it backwards. So we're funding, we're using money that we don't really have yet. Yeah.
And then lastly, the LNLs, all of them show a deficit. And we just did the audit and some of them were even cut.
So the LNLs for the second year, we just used the exact same numbers. That's a very good question, by the way. We use the exact same numbers. We didn't change anything because we, we can't budget two years. We, we just can't. We can only do what's allowed with the annual engineers report. So we use the same numbers. I knew that they look like deficits, but we're, we're going to have to adjust those next year.
Mayor, if I can?
All those deficits are covered in the 25%.
Right. And I think that's where the summary of fund balances is is really important. You can see that the gain and loss for each of the funds. And I think what you're seeing when you look at those individual funds is that the revenues exceed the expenditures in the year. And what that means is that we're using fund balance to fund the difference. And so, you know, that was reflected in the, with the LNLs in the annual engineering report is that, you know, we're still maintaining the minimum fund balance, but it was because we're, we're using that fund balance to help fund the, the difference between the revenues we're collecting and the expenses we're identifying in that fiscal year. I think that's an area where we should spend some time developing a strategy that not only addresses the revenue and expenses, but also looks at how we perform the work and whether we can outsource some of that work, whether it'll be for a lower cost, but it can also help maybe free up some staff time to do other work in the community. But maybe, maybe there's also, we do a more comprehensive evaluation so we can look at what projects we can undertake. And it, what that might mean is, is, you know, next, next, you know, Susie indicated, you know, we legally can't set the rates for next fiscal year until we do the engineering report, but start doing that planning work to identify what are all the projects we want to do? What are those activities? I think Councilmember Paula, you'd like to see, you know, more mowing, maybe more, more vegetation management and look at what the impact that has on, on, on the rates and see if, you know, maybe, maybe we don't come in with a lean trim program per se as we, we start putting more services in there. And that means bolstering the revenue by, by way of our, our LNL rates. So I think that's a, a strategy we should employ with really all of our funds is to start looking at how we can optimize both the services that we provide through, you know, whether it's in-house or contracting, and tie that to how we charge for those services. And try to be more effective at, in, you know, definitely what are the outcomes we want and tying those together. And I think it's, it's about developing the, the strategy to, to, to help inform this budget process so that, you know, we're going in, we're going into the process next year, next spring with, with our, with our strategy in mind for each of those zones and, and knowing what those, you know, we can work with Coastline to help us kind of look at the, what do we need to do in terms of rates to accomplish the things we want to and how, what impact that has on fund balance?
Something with the LNLs, just to think about, I know it's probably the wrong time to say it, but it might not be, I don't know. When they went in, the neighborhoods, the people that bought into those LNLs had the ability to pick what they had. Like, I was in Vintage Meadows, I got to pick what we did, how we built the park, how we designed it, what we put in it. Maybe when we have people like the gentleman tonight who says, you know, we'd like to have a basketball court somewhere, maybe we look into these LNLs and say, hey, you're going to get a boost for 100 bucks, but if you guys all agree, we'll put in a basketball court for you and start paying for some of these courts and upgrades to the, the LNL districts, or something like that, too.
Exactly. I think that's, that's what I was talking about, the kind of the strategy piece to this is, you know, we, I think what you see in the LNL budgets is really a lot of basic operation and maintenance. And, you know, do we want to enhance our services? And how can we do that, you know, either through combination of contracting or within-house staff?
The next one that I had was your engineering services had a $200,000 increase. I know that we talked about this this week together, but I think that it's just something we should put out to the public as well. I'm a contractor. Permit fees need to cover this kind of stuff and be higher. They just, they're, they're too low in our, in our city. And I think that we could raise them and get more revenue out of it because it needs to be done. And I think that when we have things like engineering getting into the $400,000 range for a year, we really need to look at the people that are using that engineering service and charge them accordingly. That's hard on us when we're having a $650,000 deficit. That's, we need to tighten our, tighten our belts a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a, that's an area we, we really do, it's kind of overdue. We need to look at more, more closely is our, our charges for services and how much they, you know, what's appropriate. Costs are going up. Staff costs are going up. So, you know, to keep, keep current, we need to look at our rates.
And one of our other revenue areas was the TOT that I think we should really look into and audit it and figure out why we're losing money or not gaining when they're have no vacancy signs on.
Right, right.
That's a lot of money that we're losing.
And we, we, we kind of took a pause. We had planned for it, you know, during COVID. And I think there was just such an impact on the lodging industry. It was, it didn't seem like it would be, it was going to be a meaningful exercise to do that. But, you know, now it's kind of, it's kind of coming to the forefront. So I think it's clear, we need to move forward. And we've, we've initiated some, some audit work, but the direction's clear. We need to, we need to move forward and really look at that. And again, I think that's an area where we might be able to work with the chamber on, you know, what are some strategies we can do to try to get those numbers up, besides just the auditing part of it?
With the budget, I mean, it's a good budget with the deficit that it's going to, that it has. And if you take the 2 million off the top, now you have four. In three years, we're going to be less than $2 million or below that in our, in our general fund. So we really need to know that in three years, we'll fail as a city if we keep this up. So I'll go back to everybody since everyone's had a chance. Do you want, Councilmember Bagby? Anyone in the public in here? No hands? So we'll bring it back.
So just to piggyback one comment you made, you know, fees are important to cover their costs, but bringing in economic development's also important. So it's a balancing act. Many times, we've had this conversation so many times over the many years that we've talked about budgets here in this chambers. And it's a difficult balance because we get a lot of things out there where people say it costs too much. And you try to keep costs reasonable and encourage the development. But then, you know, the other side is the development never materializes and there we are with the costs. So, but I hear what you said. The other comment I wanted to ask is on the former redevelopment agency and the debt that follows that. Have we tried to reach out to see if there's a way through legislation to get that somewhat reduced or forgiven?
Yes, we've tried. We've, we've worked with the state. We've worked with, with our consultant, with RGS. And we weren't able to get them to reduce because they said, you received the money, you have to pay back the money. What we were able to do was set aside funds from unspent bond proceeds for the final payment. So that is setting in there.
It just seems like, you know, it's left such a bad taste in all throughout the state, not just Cloverdale, in our mouths because it was retroactive and the way it came down. And it just, it just put a big hole in it. But then to come back and say, we got to pay all that money back. And it's like, it's just a mess. And I look at our state sitting on how many billions of dollars?
7.5 billion.
Yeah. And here we are, cities trying to just pay the bills barely. And it's just, something's broken there. So it might be worth articulating a letter again on behalf and maybe to our senator and to our assembly member and just having, see if we can get something and through the league, getting some effort to kind of take another look at this because it is hurting a lot of cities. There's some cities that are much richer than us, that it's not as big of a deal, but it's not, one size don't fit every city. It's really hurting our city. And I know there's several smaller cities that fit in that. So I think, I think it's worth, again, raising that issue, especially with the surplus. For three years in a row, the state has had billions in surplus funding. And I don't see any checks coming our way.
It might be, if I, maybe through the chair, it may be worthwhile to, to send a letter indicating exactly that to our senator and our assembly member because not only is there the $97.5 billion surplus, there was also a spreadsheet circulated at our last Redwood Division meeting describing all of the unfunded mandates that have not been reimbursed that are owed to the cities. So there's that number. Did, I don't know, did you get a copy of that, Susie? So that, and this was the, this, these were the numbers that were published by the, by the accounting office. This was, and I, and she said, now make sure you go to your cities, which I haven't followed up and done this yet because I've been a little busy since I got back. But she said, make sure that you go to your finance director because they may have a different number and it may be bigger. So it might be worth it for us to send a letter and just say, hey, look, this is where we, this is where we are. Because this is what our, you know, our redevelopment debt is, and this is what we're looking at in, in two years. And then, oh, by the way, here are the unfunded mandates that you, you know, that you owe us. And it was interesting, Jerry from Willets made a really great observation. He said, I bet you most of those are from police mandates. And I bet he's right. So it's actually money that the state has admitted that they owe us on top of redevelopment. So it may be time to, to draft a letter. And I certainly can circulate that at the, the Sonoma County Legislative Meeting. And maybe we can get something, you know, something from the Sonoma County cities as well because I think they owe us all money.
I'd really like to see that happen. So, thank you.
There's a public comment I'd like to, they're still here, so I'd like to hear it. I know, right? I don't, it says admin, so I don't know who it is. Please.
Admin, I've given you permission to speak. If you can please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Lands. This is Becky Ennis.
Becky.
Hi. First of all, I want to commend you all and your stamina for continuing the meeting. And I apologize if this is not the correct place to interject, but David was speaking about ARPA funding and, and the previous item on the agenda with the SRO and a lot of discussion and points about mental health. I did just want to share with council and come back that, as you know, I submitted an application for ARPA funding for the community of Cloverdale. And the Board of Supervisors did grant that award yesterday in the supervisor meeting. So roughly $490,000 will be coming to the community of Cloverdale through the Senior Center SOS Community Counseling, La Familia Sanaa, and Alexandrielle Health. So granted, that's a nice chunk of change, but please bear in mind, that's for organizations to share over two and a half years. So I did just want to report out and share that with you and hopefully be a little bit of light here late in the evening.
From all of the council, Becky, thank you so much.
That's amazing to hear. Great news. Thank you. At 10 o'clock at night.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other hands, bring it back. Any other comments?
Okay. You got your direction?
So, Mayor, we're just seeking your direction. We, we received the direction to add the cost of the police officer. I think you heard request to, to add a parks position. So if you'd like us to do that, we can, we can do that as well. It'll be a, you know, we'll be a little bit of guesstimating in terms of what the, the cost would be, but we can, we can generate a number, you know, or we might expect that the cost would be, and identifies preliminary revenue. So it wouldn't be a fully cost burden by the, by the.
Turn of funds, yeah.
Thank you. But other than that, I didn't hear any objections to, to the, to the budget. And if you give us discretion just to make, you know, any final technical minor adjustments just as needed cleanup, we'll, our plan would be to make those additions and just put it, bring it back at your June 8 meeting, put on consent unless you, unless you want it as a, as a new business item.
If you want to pull it, we can.
Okay.
Consent. You guys agree?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, David Kretob. All right. Subcommittee schedule, finance, admin, and police.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be June the 6th at 1:30.
Thank you. Planning and sustainability?
Third, third Tuesday's, Kevin? June 21st, there we go.
Just to note, the, the library has indicated that the, the meeting room is occupied that day. I think they're, they have a.
Is that the book sale?
A book sale and they have a day.
I don't want to compete with the book sale, so.
We just have to find an alternative location.
We might have to just do conference room or, yeah, or hybrid and/or hybrid.
Public works?
Mr. Mayor, we had our meeting last evening. We talked about a lot of good things. I suggest you read the, the minutes. The next meeting is going to be June 28th at 1:30.
It's exciting. You can say that with a smile, too.
Well, it's 10 o'clock, so.
Joint City and Fire District?
Third Monday? Is that also? What's, what's that date on that, Kevin?
June 13th, it says.
June 13th. It's, I have a different, you must have the hard copy. I just have the, I'm just reading the book, sorry. So hopefully they won't cancel on us again.
All right. Joint City and Schools?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's going to be to be announced. The next meeting that we had scheduled will not work for the superintendent because of the summer recess. So we're going to have to come up with another date. So it's to be announced at this point.
And the homelessness community is June 14th at 1:30. Any council reports verbal?
Oh, I just add one thing. The Redwood Division, a couple of weeks ago, we, when we, we met up in Eureka, we actually had a fill-in speaker because the speaker, the original speaker scheduled had COVID. And we heard from the district attorney of, from Humboldt. And she was wonderful. And she talked about AV47, which the chief referenced earlier today and, you know, really urged policymakers to, you know, to, to speak up about the difficulties that law enforcement and cities had, have had to deal with. So that might be something that we also want to address as a legislative issue that we want to lobby on. But she just was a, a real breath of fresh air, very common sense, very compassionate, and, and amazing public servant. It was very inspiring to get the presentation from her. But she just really, you know, laid it on the line, the difficulties that law enforcement has had because of those changes. And, you know, our, our legislature needs to hear from us about how it's affecting our local communities, our kids, our public safety. And that that might be something that we also want to take up a letter on. Great. That's it.
Informational reports, legislative reports, city manager?
Mayor, real quick, I just want to note that the county issued a press release today indicating the Cloverdale school is complete, where it is a ceremony to celebrate the completion of the project at 1 PM this Friday, full, hosted by the county. So it's pretty exciting. We're working on finalizing the agreement for the Y for, for the full season. We're working on finalizing the agreement for the Y for, for the pool season. And, you know, they've especially noted the partnership with the city as well as this whole group. Pretty exciting news. We're going to start to have that pool open and new, new birchings out there, and it's going to be heated via solar, a solar heating. So it looks really nice and certainly acknowledge that the company of the quality has put a lot of work in behind that. That's the first committee might be speaking this, this Friday.
Thank you.
City attorneys? Okay, just checking. Status impact on the water?
Mayor, council, we're going to be bringing back at your next meeting in June, a presentation on the voluntary water conservation program, and will be included in that presentation. It will be a decision whether council would like to participate or consider participating in that voluntary program. There's, there's a lot of details to it. Discussing with the whole form of subcommittee and obviously the memos that we've been putting in practice, which is a, a, a full presentation of that topic, which connects me along with the decision whether.
Thank you, sir. How about, on the current emergency?
I don't know, Kate, Mayor.
Future agenda items? The only one that, one I have is the exclusive negotiating agreement with Times Square. I'd really like to discuss that and see what we can do to, see where we're at with that. All right, seeing nothing else? We will adjourn at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, sir.
Half hour.
Joe Gutierrez.